Okay, it's six o'clock, so I called the order. The Tuesday, January 23rd, City Commission Work Session. And Ron, if you'd be so kind, is to call the roll.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Butler?
Here.
Commissioner Adamczyk?
Present.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Manna?
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. Court of three is met.
Okay, excellent. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have one major item, which is provide direction and feedback regarding economic development and housing incentives policies, along with workforce housing initiatives in Manhattan. Now generally, we don't have public comment at work sessions unless we do a procedural vote on that, so would you like to?
Yep, I'll move for a procedural motion to allow public comment on Item 4A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
All right, Mr. Adamczyk?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Manna?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and I guess Stephanie, you're gonna kick off the proceedings, I take it.
I will. Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. What we have for you, at least to start this evening off, is a presentation on some background of our current housing supply and then some additional incentives for the commission to provide feedback to staff. The way that this is structured is really into a couple of, well, four key questions. And answering these four questions and getting that feedback from each of you will help us to know where we should prioritize our time and which, if any, of the programs and incentives that are available to us that we should be looking into further. That first question is what? When we talk about the what, it's the structure type. So are there certain structure types that you aren't interested in the city helping to incentivize? Are there certain structure types that you feel like we need to concentrate some of that focus? And we'll walk through what some of those look like. Also, where? Are there certain geographical considerations that you would like for us to consider or to create policy or recommendations around? The who, that can be kind of split up into a variety of ways. Is it certain income categories? Are there different price points as far as rents or for sale units? Are we looking at owners? And then we'll talk briefly about even incentivizing certain individuals to take properties and to update them. And then really, the last slide and where we can focus a lot of conversation, hopefully, is on the how. Which programs and tools are you interested in staff continuing to pursue? And based on that feedback, we'll bring back to you several different ways that we could structure those. I wanted to start with, several of you have seen this already, but this is from our Housing Market Analysis that was adopted in November of 2022. This is our 20-year housing demand summary. Wanted to kind of just orient you to this table. We'll be referencing it several times throughout the presentation. So what you see here is over the next 20 years, our study showed that we need up to 3,600 new units in our community. At the top here, we called these internally, we called them buckets. So you can see that we go from extremely low-income individuals or households all the way up to high-income households. We will, at some point, really talk about this workforce bucket that you see here and make sure that the commission's comfortable with the definition of how we've at least been referring to workforce housing. Next, we have the area median income. Pulled some numbers on this. So to give you a sense, this data is from 2021, and our area median income during that timeframe was 77,400. So that would fall, get my mouse, that would fall kind of in this range of workforce. That just means that's the middle household income of all of the households in our community. Next is looking at the income that a two-person household would take home every year. And then down here in the colored bars, the greens stand for the number of rental units that we would need in each of those buckets. And then you see the white text within that green talks, that speaks to what that monthly rent would be for that unit. The blue is the same thing, just for for sale. And then the extremely low and very low income, there is a section here, kind of the blend between the green and the blue. That was really targeting student housing. So that was also included in our study.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So what's the standard that these housing costs are based on by the income band? Isn't it, is it like a certain percentage of your income?
Thirty percent of your income on housing.
Thank you.
This is what we need over the next 20 years. Did we look at what we need in the next two years?
We didn't break it down that way. So I think, no, we didn't. We looked at the longer term. I have some data, though, to kind of show recently what's been happening, and that might help to answer your question a little bit of what's been over like the last 10.
And also, 20 years from now, those numbers for rent costs are not going to be applicable at all. So we just kind of, that's now, right? I mean...
This is, yeah, this is as of 2021. What, and we'll kind of get into this a little bit later, but every three years, we really need to be updating these numbers and reassessing where we sit. Especially as we see additional housing units coming online, we need to make sure that we're accurately reflecting these numbers. So that is something that, I can just tell you right now that our new area median income just came out. It's $100,000 for 2023. So those numbers are being updated. This was just from our Housing Market Analysis. And since this is a document that many of you are familiar with or have referenced, we are going to continue to use these numbers right now until we do an update of this and have another table to present to you. When we look at the what, a lot of times when we talk about housing, I think a lot of our minds go to a single-family detached home. That's what a majority of the housing units we have in Manhattan are. But there, in that, or if we talk about multifamily, a lot of times we think about larger apartment complexes. But really, there's this whole gamut in between those two. We have something that could look like a cottage house, which is still a single-family unit. It's just on a smaller lot, they're closer together. We, there's accessory dwelling units, as you can see in this picture. And then just kind of a wide variety of different housing types that we don't find a lot in Manhattan, but are definitely something that we see across the country. So really, as we kind of get into this more, keep these in mind. And as I continue to present more data to you, I just wanted to give you kind of a picture, a visual, to reference back as we talk about different types of housing. I will, I'll just go ahead and say this now. Some of the housing types that are on this screen, we currently, under our Manhattan Development Code, which has our zoning regulations, some of these housing types wouldn't be allowed. The intent tonight isn't really to get into the regulatory, the zoning side of things. That could be a whole separate four-hour conversation, probably. But really, based on your feedback tonight, we can begin to have that zoning conversation, should you want to, on different ways to allow some of these housing types to be allowable within the community. So when we start to talk about the what, as far as this table goes, this is really where we're trying to get feedback from you guys this evening is... So for the more, when we talk about affordable housing, really, that term is kind of targeted towards these two lower buckets, the extremely low income, the very low income. That's up to 60% AMI, or area median income. So there are federal funds that are out there to target individuals within that bracket. There's housing vouchers, there's, we have nonprofits within our community dedicated to providing houses in those two areas. Most of what we're talking about this evening, as far as the programs and incentives go, are going to be from this workforce housing band or bucket further to the right, so up to the high income. Something to be considering this evening, are there certain programs that would allow us to incentivize everything across the spectrum, even million-dollar homes? Because it still says that those are something that we need within our community. So give some consideration to if there are certain either targets of housing within these price points, or if you already have a sense of there are certain things that we just aren't interested in trying to incentivize. This is, this is my favorite slide that we were able to come up with. And what this is showing is, over the last three decades, looking at some building permit data that was pulled, and this is all reflected in $20,000. So it takes into consideration inflation. And what we see, and I've highlighted here, is the workforce housing definition in that band. And you can see over the last decade, the market really hasn't been able to fulfill the housing needs in that workforce housing band. So what you see in pink are representative of single-family homes or building permits that were issued. And the yellow are two-to-five-unit dwelling types. A lot of times, you'll hear us refer to that as missing-middle housing. And then the green are like larger townhomes or apartment complexes. Another thing to note is that for, so the trend line for each of these different housing types, you see that the single-family is at a much steeper trajectory than what either the two-to-five family or the multifamily lines are. We can come back to this. I'm gonna jump really quick to, as we start to talk about where, that building permit data that you just saw, we took the last 10 years of it and we decided to map that. And what we really found, and we also included blue township here, just so you can see by comparison the number of units compared to inside-city limits. And what we're seeing is a lot of our new single-family is happening on the perimeter of our community. Those probably, at least 95% of those are happening in benefit districts. And then when we look at the two-to-five family units or the multifamily, you can see that a lot of those outside of the links are concentrated near K-State campus. So really tailoring, those units are tailored more towards students. One could argue then towards our workforce or our residents. This is a zoning map that shows all of our commercial, industrial, and residential zoning districts. 60% of the city is dedicated to residential. Of that 60%, 80% of it is single-family detached, meaning that in 80% of the areas that we have already zoned as residential, you can only build a single-family detached home. There are no other structure types that are allowed. The, so starting to look at the who, and really looking at it, we talk about it from an AMI. A lot of times with some of the state grants, they use that area median income as a way to set certain parameters or to talk about certain household incomes. But we can also look at it from an average take-home pay for that two-person household. We did some digging as far as our population goes. And what this curvy line that I just put up here shows is that of, we spread our population out over these, excuse me, over these five different buckets of income type. And the highest percentage of our residents are in this $50,000 to $74,000 a year take-home pay. So that is the highest percentage of our residents. If we were, so for instance, the, we have the fewest amount of residents that are in this 136,000 or more annual income. What you'll also notice is that in this same area, not only is it the largest percentage of our population within this category, but that's also the area that we need the most housing units within our community over the next 20 years. Does that, did that resonate? Did I explain that? Okay. I kind of went back and forth on the best way to try to explain what we were looking at there. If we go back to, so kind of starting to link some of this together, if we go back to where we need the most housing in our community, where we have the largest percentage of our population, and we look over the last 10 years at what is being built, we're really missing out on this area here, which correlates back to that area that we need the most housing units over the next 20 years. So Commissioner McCullough, we haven't really been able to look at just in, you know, a two-year or five-year segment, but learning from what we've done over the last decade, we're seeing that the market isn't able to deliver housing units in that area that we needed the most. I'm gonna pause there and before we start talking about some of the different housing programs to see if there were any questions just on that first part of the presentation.
So just to be clear, it seems like we need about 3/4-ish of the need to cover the 50%, like the lower 50% of our population by income, is that...
From like here down? Yeah, that's where a majority of our need is. And I think, just from some conversations I've had with various developers in our community, and some of them are here tonight if they choose to speak, but I think what you might hear them say is there's a reason why we're not seeing a lot in this area, because it's extremely difficult to make profit off of housing that's in that range.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Any other questions, or should I proceed?
Stephanie, I'm still finding the projection of 20 years. I mean, it seems to me that we should be talking about what we need in the next five years. In 20 years, people may be working from the moon. I mean, you know, I mean, we may change our entire worker supply, that kind of thing. But can we authoritatively say that right now we need more workforce housing? That's what we should be zeroing in on? I mean, you know, because...
Based on this, yes. I would say that's where the need exists, just from a data perspective.
Yeah, well, you can get dated to death sometimes.
Yep.
But I'm just concerned that we're making the right decision for what Manhattan needs right now, not what we might need in 2044. Yeah.
One comment I might make is, you know, I get what you're saying. There is an immediate need, absolutely. But with a long-term need, with a, I mean, this is, I mean, I guess over 20 years. But still, the immediate need is very great, and it is not something that we're gonna solve in a year or two. So, you know, I see your point where this is kind of a long-term view, but it at least gives us a really long target to look at. You know, and we can start some things that can hopefully be sustainable in the long term instead of just, okay, let's put up some house, some, you know, container houses or something like that in a, wherever, an empty lot somewhere. That's not really a long-term, sustainable solution. So I think, you know, we gotta kind of come at it from both ways. And having that long-term target does kind of give us a, you know, we know where we are, let's see where we want to be. And if we can make progress throughout that time, then we'll be making progress and helping incrementally.
So I would say two things, just really quick before we move on. One, 20 years is a pretty standard timeframe that we use for if it's transportation planning, if it's comprehensive plans with housing, even. But I would reiterate again that every three years, we're going to be updating this data. So we'll begin to kind of build, we'll be able to see how this fluctuates every three years to see if our needs are changing or if we're making progress in certain areas. So I would just add that.
Did this study dramatically change from the study we did in 2001?
Yeah, no, it didn't. There, so a lot of the same recommendations that were in 2000, we saw reappear in this study. So it kind of told us what we already knew. I think there was just a different way of, some data, some charts that we can actually reference, and then some tools of how to achieve some of the housing needs of our community. Okay, now we'll dive into what I kind of think is the fun stuff. And this is probably where we will be spending a majority of our time this evening. When we start talking about the how, there's a variety of different programs and tools that are out there. A lot of communities that are in Kansas have taken advantage of these. I always like to think that Manhattan is kind of a big brother or big sister that other smaller communities look up to. But when it comes to implementing a lot of these programs, we're looking to Dodge City and we're looking to Salina and communities that are smaller than us because they've been so successful in implementing some of these. So we, there's a lot of really good examples of what's working across the state, but really just needing direction from you all on where you want ahead. So there's five key programs or tools that we'll talk about this evening. The first of those, and I have a couple of slides on some other of these, but the first is the workforce housing sales tax. This was passed by the voters in 2020. We began receiving some of that revenue in 2023, and it's expected to generate about $8 million over the next 10 years. We did, so as of December, we received about 10 months of collection so far, and it was $658,000. So we are on track to meet about that $800,000 a year, at least for 2023. One of the questions that I posed to you earlier is how do we want to define workforce? We have a working definition from our Housing Market Analysis that we've been using, but really, that term kind of varies. We chose an upper income that is a little bit more stringent than some other communities or even some state programs, which is fine. But just wanting to make sure that when we talk workforce, we're all referencing that same definition. One that I do not have a slide on, but it's pretty straightforward, is Moderate Income Housing, MIH. That is a grant program from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or KHRC. That is a grant up to $650,000. It's to be used for vertical construction, so the actual building, not infrastructure. Their grant processes, it's three different times during the year. And a city or a county has to be the project sponsor, although we can work with a private developer to submit a grant. These are incredibly competitive. We're hearing it takes, you know, maybe three times of submitting the same grant before you're actually awarded it. Something else that we can consider are industrial revenue bonds. Some of you are familiar with those from a commercial-industrial standpoint, but we can also use those for housing projects. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be low-income housing projects. So there's both the sales tax exemption component as well as the property tax abatement. I have a whole lot of slides on Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, or RHID. That did receive a name change last year. It used to be called Rural Housing Incentive District, but because this is now open to populations of any size, they decided to rebrand it. And then we'll talk kind of through the RHID process a little bit about benefit districts, which we have today, which some people refer to those as special assessments. That's another name they're known by. And you'll see how what we're doing today through benefit districts is actually incentivizing certain types of housing in certain locations and how RHID can be a tool that could potentially, I'll say, replace benefit districts, in a sense, if we decided to go that direction. Yes, ma'am?
Stephanie, I attended the October 20th meeting of the Workforce Housing Steering Committee. And there were a couple of other tools that were mentioned at that meeting that I didn't see either in your presentation or in the summary that we received. Notably, community land trust, limited equity cooperatives. Can we, you don't need to go into it right now, but I'd like to circle back at some point and find out why they're not included in here.
Sure. So you received this morning that, my apologies, I wanted to get that in your packet, and I failed to do so, the summary from the Workforce Housing Steering Committee. This was a committee that was a temporary, had a temporary charge. It was appointed by the City Commission. They met four times during 2023. And what their initial charge was, was to provide the commission with a recommendation on how to utilize that $8 million in sales tax. As we began the conversation with that very knowledgeable group, we realized that a lot of our time was focused on regulation and policy and changes to the zoning code and just a lot of really great ideas that right now, our regulations and policies, just, they don't, they don't address or they don't necessarily support. So there, like I mentioned, that's a whole separate conversation, but they did have some suggestions as far as funding allocation goes, just very broad speaking. They, there was a lot of, I wouldn't say we ever got consensus. We just tried to take what we heard multiple times over and over. And we heard a lot on focus on parts of town that already have infrastructure, so that infill or that kind of redevelopment opportunity. They would like for us to leverage that sales tax. If there's opportunities to match a grant, if there's opportunities to leverage this along with some other tools or incentives, we should consider that. They also wanted to make sure this funding was used and kind of got the biggest bang for our buck by making sure that it wasn't just a single-family home, that we were looking at units that, or dwellings that had multiple units within them. So that missing-middle housing or even some multifamily structures. I just mentioned again, missing-middle. Again, there's a lot of policy that stands or regulation that stand in our way of being able to implement that. And then the last thing we talked a lot about was geography. So really focusing on areas of our town core, you know, think downtown, Aggieville, some of our established neighborhoods that are close to services and to jobs. To give you some ideas of missing-middle, again, just for that image to kind of be stuck in your mind, here's some examples of what those could look like. Right now, a townhome structure like this is really the only ones that would be allowed under our current regulations. Yes?
So I'm a little confused. There seems to be some tension here where you're stressing that missing-middle is an important part of what we really need to be focusing on, while at the same time, you're saying that there are a lot of regulations in place that preclude that. So I know it takes time to change those regulations and a lot of staff effort, but isn't, won't that be necessary in order to be able to move this forward?
You guys get to share with me tonight if that's something you're interested in pursuing. So as we talk missing-middle, as we talk, I'm just gonna say the dirty word of ADUs or accessory dwelling units, which is this picture, or cottage-style homes, which are these bottom two. If that's something that the commission is wanting us to explore and wanting us to bring back a recommendation of how that regulation would look within our Manhattan Development Code, we are happy to do that. We haven't spent any of our time there or invested our time in that just because we haven't received, I don't think, direction from the commission that that's the way that we want to go.
Okay, thanks.
The next program, IRBs, and I am catching up to speed or trying to very quickly. Jason is our expert when it comes to IRBs. So if you have, if you have any questions, I might defer to him. But really, there's two ways that these can be applied to housing projects. One is that property tax abatement, which is, could be used for up to 10 years. And it can use from anywhere 1% to 100% of the percentage of the ad valorem increment from the property improvement. It's the same, it's the same as what we do for commercial or manufacturing businesses. The second one is the sales tax exemption on construction materials. And speaking with our bond counsel, there's really only a few qualifications for limiting factors of how we can use this for housing. One is that it has to be rental. And it has to have a reasonable expectation that it will remain rental at the time that the bond is issued. The other one, the other two that bond counsel shared with me is it has to be for market-rate units, so we can't look at any sort of subsidized housing. So that very low income to, or that extremely low income to low income, that is a whole separate kind of gamut when it comes to IRBs. And then the other thing that was mentioned to me is that this is traditionally used on two or more units. So it's not traditionally used on single-family housing. Okay, bear with me on this, because RHIDs are rather complicated. So at any point, please feel free to stop me and ask for clarification. So the RHID, it works very similarly to a TIF district that we have, for example, in Aggieville, but it's for residential instead. It captures the incremental gain in the property tax for up to 25 years. You'll note that this is 25 years, and a TIF, it's typically 20. And originally, when RHIDs were created under statute, they were there to help finance public improvements. This was for communities that didn't have benefit district or weren't used to using those to help fund the public infrastructure. Last year, they revised the RHID statute to allow now for RHID to be used for actual, the construction of homes, so the vertical aspect of it. The RHID process, it's rather lengthy, I would say, but the statute's very clear on how this works. So we start out by having to have a housing needs analysis, which we have. That's our Housing Market Analysis. It needs to be updated from the state statute. Typically, if it starts getting around five years old, they consider that information out of date, which is why we're recommending updating our HMA every three years. What the city commission would do is pass a resolution saying that we have a housing issue in our community and that referencing the chart that you see here. And whatever the the proposal is for that R H I D, let's say it was for, you know, this this high-income band or bucket right here. We would say that our housing market analysis says that we need a hundred and fifty rental units within this price point. And then that goes, that's sent on to the Kansas Department of Commerce for their approval. Really, they're just making sure that whatever that proposed development is, is meeting our housing market analysis need. After we hear back from the Department of Commerce, we begin working with that developer on a very detailed and specific development plan. This will lay out exactly where the project's going to occur, how many dwelling units they're going to create, what structure type they are, what the rent or what the for-sale value is going to be, just a very, think planned unit development, but that level of detail with this. Resolution number two just states that we're planning to have a public hearing to adopt this R H I D, and then we would move to the, hold a public hearing and adopt an ordinance that is establishing the R H I D. The school district and the county, because their property taxes are involved in this process, they do not have to approve an R H I D, but they do get an opportunity to veto this process. I will note that Manhattan is in two different school districts, so that was, that was just brought to my attention last week.
So, so this, these funds would be captured and a hundred percent of them would go to the district similar, like, like with the TIF? So they, none of the incremental property taxes would go to the school district or county for twenty-five years instead of just?
Well, yes, I'll say yes, but that, there's a lot of different ways that we can structure it if need be. And what we're finding from some of our peer communities that are doing this is it's not taking twenty-five years. Those R H I Ds are paying off much sooner. So I have a couple of examples that we'll run through, and you can see in those scenarios how quickly those pay off.
Sure. It'd be kind of tough if we're talking about adding, especially, you know, if we're talking about kids, adding them to the rolls and then not increasing the property taxes for it, it might be kind of a tough pill to swallow, so.
Yep. So we'll start here. This is where we start kind of bringing into benefit districts. So this top table is talking about just the developer expenses. The bottom one is where we'll get into the homeowner expenses. So when we look at the developer expenses, whether it's constructing a home under an R H I D or a benefit district, it's, it's really the same bottom line. That cost of infra, so in this example, we have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home that's being built. The cost of the lot was fifty thousand dollars. The developer's putting in a hundred and ten thousand dollars of public infrastructure, but that public infrastructure is even being, either being paid for by the benefit district or by the R H I D, so that's, that's not part of that sale price. And you'll see that I have a couple of asterisks there on some assumptions that were made in this scenario, but I'm just trying to keep things, keep things simple. When we look at how other communities that don't have benefit districts are financing their projects, is a lot of times that infrastructure cost is actually wrapped into the price of the home. So we could make an argument that the the benefit district, because the city is the one bonding and interesting and upfront financing that that infrastructure, that is, that is a benefit right now back to that developer. When we look at the the homeowners, so jumping down to the second table, we could still argue that the benefit district is actually a benefit back to the homeowner as well. So in a situation where the city is not, is not financing that public infrastructure, you can see that for the same, the same house, the the individual buying this would have to go out and get a a loan or a mortgage that's at least five hundred dollars more a month. Under that benefit district, because that infrastructure cost is being spread over twenty years, they can, they can slowly pay that back over time, and that is what this number right here is. That four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, that's the cost of those, what we call specials, the cost of that infrastructure. Now, under an R H I D, where we see this as even more of a benefit back to our residents, is that it's still the the same mortgage, base mortgage, it's the same taxes that they're paying as under a benefit district, but a portion of those taxes are now being used to pay towards those specials. So there's not that extra four hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month that that homeowner is having to to try to finance and work into their their monthly budget. So how the R H I D works, we're gonna say we have a vacant lot. It's, it was bought for ten thousand dollars, or right now, it's valued at ten thousand dollars, and it generates a hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year in property tax. That, the way that that's divvied up among the three taxing entities is you can, you can see at the bottom. And so what we're saying is, so a developer comes in, they put a hundred and ten thousand dollars of infrastructure in the ground. They build a home that they're going to sell for three hundred thousand dollars, and that home is now going to generate the fifty-four hundred dollars in property taxes every year. What the R H I D does is takes the difference between the the new property value and that base property value, known as the increment, and it uses that increment to pay towards that infrastructure over a period of up to twenty-five years. When we look at this from a property tax impact position, you can see that under our our vacant site, what, how much property taxes are generated and then how that's divvied up among the the taxing entities. You'll, the the twenty mils here at the bottom, that's broken out because that's really, whether or not it's included in the increment that can be used towards the R H I D payment is a county-by-county decision. It just depends on how they, how that county refers to the twenty mils, whether they consider this to be a school district tax or whether they consider it to be a a state tax. So we we develop our site, and with year five of an R H I D, you can see the amount of property tax that's being generated. And then the city, the county, and the school district continue to receive the the same amount that they did with that, with that vacant site. They receive that base. In this scenario at the bottom, we show that the the school district would can, would receive the twenty mils that, those twenty mils are collected by the county, they go to the state, and then the state redistributes them back out to the school districts. And so that's where you see that incremental gain over time, because they're fully collecting on those twenty mils. In this scenario, it would take twenty-one years to pay off the infrastructure cost of the three hundred thousand dollar home and that hundred and ten thousand dollar, well, with a three hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred and ten thousand dollars of infrastructure over time. So you can see that for up, you know, up to year twenty-one, most of that, that property tax revenue is going back to the R H I D. But in year twenty-five, we have, you know, a whole subdivision potentially of homes that we could argue may not otherwise exist unless we were to incentivize it. And I think that's part of the question before you, is how much are we willing to to incentivize or willing to help make, help develop homes and increase the supply? And what, what was risk are we willing to take?
So, I mean, I can see it on your chart, but just something to point out that for all the taxing entities, they would normally get some inflation amount that would take those taxes up. That the way this is structured, you don't get any of that. It just stays that same.
Stays constant. Yes. And Commissioner Repel, to go back to a previous question, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent of the increment. For example, here, we kept out that twenty mils. There's a variety of ways, a variety of ways that we can structure it, just depending on the pro forma of each individual project.
And is that something we'd have to work out with the county or just tell them when we're making our our proposal and allow them to veto it?
We would put in a lot of effort and work, so with the developer, to go through it, and then the county or school district to veto it. So I think it, this is kind of, I guess this is more of a wrong question really than mine of of how he wants to play that with our partners.
Could I just say, we have in the past, when we were first talking about the South Development, thought it was a done deal, and the county said no. So the county has the ability to veto these things, and it has used that veto in a major way in the past.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as with any major project where you're asking other governmental units to give up some of their future income streams, you have to look at, you know, is that gonna develop on its own or not? So what's that cost alternative of waiting versus now? And so having those discussions at city-county meetings or or other things, I think, are gonna be something that's very important in the future, so that we don't spend a lot of time, not just staff time, but the developer's time working on something just to get it vetoed. So it's been our practice to clearly communicate our projects. The the issue becomes there's likely multiple projects, so it's not, it, there's a lot of work to be done in gathering that. And some are small and some are large, and that's, it will certainly be a a challenge, but I think it's something that we can work with our other governing bodies to decide, you know, what's gonna be in the mix. And, you know, is it, are we gonna give up a hundred percent of ours and ask for them to give up fifty percent of theirs? I mean, you can tailor it a number of different ways, and we did that with downtown redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
There's three different ways that we could structure an R H I D. It all uses the same basic process we went through, but there, each of these, each of these different methods addresses a a different issue. So the first is a kind of our traditional, like what we do now with benefit districts. It's our greenfield development. It's vacant land right now, and we use the property taxes to pay for infrastructure. There's an opportunity where we have an existing benefit district already, where there's infrastructure in the ground, but the lots have not been yet developed on, that we could use an R H I D to pay off those existing specials. And I have a slide to talk to a little bit more about why we might want to, to consider that. And then the last one is on infill projects. We can act, I mentioned this earlier, that we can actually use a portion of that increment to pay for the vertical construction if one of two conditions exists, and these are are written into the statute. One is if the infrastructure is more than ten years old, and two, if the property is included in a benefit district. I'm guessing that a majority of all of our property would, would fall into one of those two categories, so that leaves it pretty open. So we'll kind of walk through each of these scenarios and what that would look like. So the R H I D, the R H I D greenfield, this is what we we just walked through. It's using that that increment in property taxes to help pay off the, to pay off the the infrastructure cost, so that that isn't absorbed by the homeowner as an additional, like, as an an extra to their mortgage and property taxes that they're already paying. And you can see just from a yearly, from yearly expenses, what that would save that homeowner. When we look at using R H I D to pay off the specials for an existing benefit district, so here's the example, is if I was going to purchase a home and I was, and I was gonna, I guess, be building a new home, and I'm trying to determine which lot I want to get. I see both of these lots. One of them is in an R H I D, one of them's in a benefit district. You don't really know that when you're out looking at at land on the street, but each of them have the same costs. They're both fifty thousand dollars. But what, under the benefit district, there's this additional cost that the homeowner's going to have to pay over the next twenty years to pay off that infrastructure. So here, if I decide to go with this lot, it's really not fifty thousand dollars with, you know, as far as my bank is accounts concerned, because every year I'm paying an additional fifty-five hundred dollars for the infrastructure, to pay off the infrastructure that comes with that lot. Under the R H I D, when I I mortgage my home and I'm paying my property taxes, that that infrastructure cost is absorbed by those property taxes. So in order to keep things kind of on an even playing field, it would make sense that that if we went the R H I D route, that we're also establishing R H I Ds for our existing benefit districts that have vacant lots. Otherwise, it's going to be a a really hard sell for somebody to want to purchase that that benefit district lot, because there's this added cost that comes with it either every month, every year, and then a substantial cost over that twenty-year period. Does that kind of answer your question earlier? Okay. When we look at a map of our existing benefit districts within the community, you can see that this really correlates to the the building permit map that I showed. A lot of our new structures are are being built in areas that that we have in a benefit district established. All of the red outlined lots are also those that are currently vacant and zoned as residential. So if we look up, really, it's gonna be kind of down here in the Stonehaven part, and then up here in the northwest part of our community. This is where we would see kind of that conflict between a new R H I D and an existing benefit district. And that's where we would probably want to look at creating R H I Ds around those existing benefit districts just to keep those those lots on the same, on an even playing field. When we look at R H I D for infill, and and oftentimes, this probably will be a a multifamily or like a two-to-five-unit project. So we have a developer, he, he or she purchases a lot for fifty thousand dollars. They put up a building that was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to construct, and so their total developer cost is this seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. You can see how that equates to both a sales price and a monthly rent price. If we used an R H I D, again, that lot price is the same. The cost of construction of that building doesn't change. But this developer has asked for two, twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, and what that does is reduces their total, their total cost for constructing that building. And you can see then that sales price for each of those units is reduced by twenty-five thousand, and that monthly rent goes down. So when we look back at this table, what started off without that R H I D was adding housing within this range. By adding that, by creating that R H I D and allocating that twenty-five thousand dollars for each of those, each of those units, we actually get to slide some of those units down into to this bracket where we need the most housing within our community.
Can you explain that again?
Sure. So when we look at, we'll just look at the sales price. The, for the, for this developer to purchase a lot, we're gonna say that they make a ten percent profit and then some realtor fees. They would have to sell this, sell this unit at twenty-five thousand dollars per unit. If we were to create an R H I D, which would use part of that property tax increment, and they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, what that means is that they would be able to reduce their construction cost by seventy-five thousand, and then that would equate to that sales price of that home, we could actually bring it down by twenty-five thousand dollars. And then that would move those units from this upper income bucket down into that workforce range.
Stephanie, how many units are you talking about?
This example was just three units. It could be used a variety of ways. Okay, so here's the, here's the, how it breaks down from a property tax perspective. That current site has been vacant. We have several of these around our community. Some of them have been there for twenty or thirty years that have been remaining vacant. We could, so this is how much the the city, the county, and the school district are receiving off that property today. And then this R H I D, since it is only twenty-five thousand dollars per unit or a total of seventy-five thousand, it pays off in nine years. So we make that initial kind of upfront investment for by year ten. The, you can see what that does to each taxing entity's property tax that they're now collecting. Again, this tool, we can point to several different areas in our community where it would be really hard to argue that, you know, we should just wait a little bit longer, something's gonna happen there. So I do think that there's a very strategic way that we can use specifically the the R H I D infill tool. Okay, any questions on R H I D before my last slide?
Kind of. You mentioned vacant lots. Do we have a a good idea of like vacant standing structures?
We might. I don't have that data. I probably, I'm not sure our first production keeps that.
What do you mean by vacant, Commissioner? Are you talking for sale? Are you talking under construction but not quite done?
Just nobody lives in a house. Like, I know there's one, I think they've been doing some work on it along Kimball, that's been vacant for as long as I've lived there. I've seen, there's some scaffolding and stuff like that around it now, but just stuff like that. I'm sure there's more than that around.
Yeah, if there's a permit that's issued, we can, you know, quantify that and get that out as as a data point. The other thing that we are aware of, and I know Stephanie's met with the county, they keep track of occupancy rates in our community from a rental perspective, and that data is something that is tracked geographically. So there are areas of our community that have higher occupancy rates than others. You can imagine anything around campus is typically a lot higher. You go to the northeast side of town, some, you know, traditionally, that's a little lower. You go, it, it varies just geographically, but those are the things that we've paid attention to in the past that give us a guidance in terms of what's occupied and what's not.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Okay, this is really just to to start a conversation, to start getting that feedback. What we're looking at here is just from what staff is. What we're looking at here is just from what staff has been able to gather, whether that's through the Workforce Housing Steering Committee or what our, our peer communities are doing. It's taking the, the four questions that we just went through. And what it's showing is, is different types of housing, infill, greenfield, and then if there's any sort of income restrictions with these programs. And then over to the side are the different programs that we just walked through. And a recommendation on how we would leverage each of these tools to meet that, that housing type or where those tools should be used. So we'll just pick on, well, so for a single family detached, we already have benefit districts which allow, which we see a lot of single family being created using the benefit district. So this would replace the benefit district with an RHID traditional greenfield. And for areas, excuse me, for areas that are already in a benefit district that have that infrastructure in the ground, utilizing that, that, that second type of RHID tool for the future construction of single family homes. You'll see that we, we didn't include there the IRB sales tax exemption or the property tax abatement component. Again, those have to be rentals in order to, to use those. MIH, that sometimes can be used on a, a larger subdivision, but not necessarily specific, just a single family house that, that someone wants to go and build. And then per the Workforce Housing Steering Committee's recommendation, we did not include the Workforce Housing Sales Tax as a recommended tool to be used for a single family. Of course, that is at your discretion, but just trying to reflect what we've heard from community conversations, that Workforce Housing Steering Committee, and what we've been learning for a variety of these different tools. I would note that of these, these two that are kind of shaded out a little bit, that's just because IRBs aren't necessarily designated for vertical construction or infrastructure. It's just towards that total project cost. So it could really be used for, for either of those to help lower the, the total cost of the project. The last thing that I will mention is there was some conversation that's been had about potentially incentivizing individuals. I think specifically this was in the, kind of the core part of our community of incentivizing people to purchase some of the older homes and then to put some work into those to make them either habitable again or to, to reinvest in some of those older areas of our community. That, that seems like just a drop in the bucket from what our, our larger demand is for housing. I think that's certainly something that we could look at in the future. But right now, what we're seeing is it's really about creating additional supply. And until we have additional supply, we're going to continue to see some of those prices keep creeping up. And we're going to continue to see that, within that, that workforce housing range, we're not able to meet the demand that is currently there. With that, I will stand for any questions that you may have. I know, no pressure. Or if there's additional clarification you need from me.
Well, I just have a couple of questions. I'll start. Did you look at CHUDOS at all?
Those were discussed throughout the Workforce Housing Steering Committee. We really started with some, some tools that are available to us and what we feel are kind of an easier lift right now for, for staff, just given the, the current structure of, of our staffing levels. But also, all of these programs are being utilized by a lot of smaller communities. So we feel like right now this is something that's doable. Same thing with the Community Land Trust. We know that that's a tool available, but that's, they're a lot more, I think, complicated, at least from our perspective right now. Not saying that it's a bad tool to consider. These just seemed like something that we were already familiar with. You know, the RHID is very similar to a TIF. MIH is a grant. We, we apply for grants quite a bit. And then the IRBs, we're already familiar with because of commercial development.
Well, the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership has built almost 300 units using the CHUDO, you know, model in the last 20 years, which is pretty substantial. The other thing, and this is going to sort of be a, should the city stop doing benefit districts as have many, many other cities? And basically just done, you know, the developer has used, put in the infrastructure. Would that change any of these formulas?
So that goes back, I'll just pull up this slide again. And I think that, I think that might actually go against what we're trying to accomplish. So let me look at, this is the scenario you're talking about. Is this no city financing?
Uh-huh.
And what that does is it actually cre, it increases the cost of each of those individual homes for the homeowner. So if we're trying to create additional supply in some of the, the workforce housing range, getting rid of benefit districts would potentially just increase the cost of housing. And we're trying to find ways, I think, to, to lower the, the cost for somebody to be able to buy one.
Yeah, I can see that. But I can also see that specials are often perceived as taxes. And the city has occasionally been caught holding the bag with some of the specials when the individual who was going to develop that site or those sites did not do it. And things went to tax sales and that kind of thing. So as a, someone who needs to be assured that we're paying attention to the city's financing, since so many other communities do not use specials, I think it really started in Manhattan when we had small developers who couldn't afford to put in all the, you know, the infrastructure. And then we'd build one house at a time. But now most of our developers are quite, at the level where they can do eight houses at a time or 10 houses at a time. So we have looked at that in the past. It might be something to look at in the future.
Okay.
What's a CHUDO?
Go ahead.
Oh. What's a CHUDO?
CHODO.
A CHODO?
Yeah.
It's a community housing, oh.
Yeah, this far I can go too.
Organizational development.
Okay.
Unit?
Or jail.
It uses tax credits, you know.
They can leverage tools through the state a lot easier than other groups. The CHODO formed probably close to 25 years ago. I think it was within the first couple of years I was here. Carol Peak was part of that. Karen, I think you were part of some of those conversations too. But they're a great organization to have. They can leverage state and federal dollars into your community. It's all about affordable housing. The only, on another topic on benefit districts, just to give you all some perspective, we've issued over $70 million over the last 20 years in benefit districts, special assessments. Our delinquency is under $600,000. So we're, we're less than 1% as far as a delinquency goes. So I think our developers, our builders, our home buyers have kept pace and paid the bills along the way. It doesn't mean you don't run into stretches where you have a developer start something. Lee Mill Village is our, is our golden example here. And it's taken some time, but we're about to the point where those lots are built upon and generating revenue, and we're past the, the point where the specials are delinquent. Most communities are struggling with these concepts because they haven't done benefit districts in the past. Now programs are starting to be rolled out to where the city is being asked to fund that infrastructure the way we have done it for the last 25 years, to give them then the opportunity to turn it into an RHID where those property taxes can pay those specials over time. That benefit is directly to the property owner. The RHID is built for the property owner for that 20-year period. You could argue benefit districts are a tool that do benefit the developer, but they ultimately do benefit the property owner over time. I think Stephanie's provided you some good snapshots of that mortgage would be $400 to $500 more for that property owner if that infrastructure was rolled into the cost of that land and the city hadn't issued that debt. It's something we've, we've been very aware of in our community for some time. You do have to keep an eye on and keep a very close watch on delinquencies in special assessments. If we were starting to see that percentage grow and we were starting to notice more developments not able to pay their specials, I think the city should absolutely reconsider. But it is a debt that we issue and we cover that doesn't account against our total indebtedness ability as a community. The state laws allow that to go into a separate category. So there, it doesn't impact us from that perspective. But it does give the community a tool. And the environment that we're in right now, and it's not just Manhattan, it's not just Kansas. This is nationwide in terms of how do you address housing. This tool and what we've been utilizing it for, for the last 25 years, we actually have a lower bar to clear in order to do an RHID with this type of structure than most communities in Kansas because we have been issuing that debt and holding that responsibility for the last 25.
On the, the CHODO topic, it, it reminded me, there's a couple of individuals tonight, I think, that will speak to low-income housing tax credit projects. Those aren't included in this presentation because that is already happening. Again, it's that 60% AMI and below. Those have different requirements as far as these tools go. So those, they were intentionally, I guess, left out because we are already applying for, for tax credits and working with organizations to help fulfill some of those needs there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that you might hear a little bit about that this evening. And that's the reason that they weren't included in this presentation.
And may I say, the city has been very supportive of the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership in building their various groups of housing that they've done. But they have brought in an awful lot of housing. And I would hate to think we don't consider the CHUDO possibilities when you, when you look at the fact that, you know, we've brought in, and we're looking at another, a senior housing area, so.
Yeah, so really the, the presentation this evening is from everything that, that comes from this line further to the right. The CHODO, the, the LI-TEC, all of that are covering these, these bottom two buckets. So certainly important, certainly a need in our community. We feel like we have some tools there that we have been utilizing, but there hasn't been much other than benefit districts that we've been able to utilize for really the, the whole top two-thirds of, of this chart here. Any other questions or kind of reactions to, to this staff recommendation? I'll, while you think on that, I think the feedback that we're really looking for this evening, and I think you'll hear from, from several individuals within our community, is, is there anything in this table that is unsettling to you? Is there anything here that just doesn't, that doesn't sit well? That you would like us either, excuse me, to bring back additional information? Or you want us to entirely eliminate altogether? Before we, we do a lot of digging into how this would work and some of the, the restrictions that would go with these, we just wanted to get a feel from if we're on the right track. Or if there's certain things here that, that you would like to provide staff with different recommendations on.
No, I think I understand that the only, I guess the only question there, you know, bottom line, it says workforce housing sales tax. How are we going to spend that money? I mean, that's just open-ended there, right?
Yes. So if you're in a, if you're comfortable with kind of the different columns here that we're suggesting that that funding be used for, we already have a lot of ideas. We just haven't shared those yet because we wanted to make sure that the commission, that we were kind of on the right track. We can take some of the groundwork from the Workforce Housing Steering Committee, and then we can begin to look at how we can leverage that workforce housing tax within some of these other programs. So, you know, just kind of a wild thought, but of, with the RHID infill, if we're, if we're wanting to, to see an infill project, which are typically more expensive, we could create that RHID. We could look at doing a sales tax exemption on it. And maybe they still need, you know, $50,000 to make that 16-unit project work. We could look at an opportunity to dip into that workforce housing sales tax to make that project whole. That's just one example of how it could work. There's a lot of others that, that are out there. But wanting to make, really what we're looking feedback on is we're recommending right now that we already have tools for, for greenfield development. There aren't a lot of tools for infill development that we've utilized today. So is that something that you're comfortable with? Were those workforce housing strategies that we bring back, sales tax strategies that we bring back before you are going to be reflective of what you see here?
Okay, so I like, you know, this RHID. I, I get the benefit districts. I really think that did benefit the developers because they weren't taking on that burden. But, but the homeowner, I mean, really when they look at the bottom line, they're paying for it. You know, because you had special taxes for, I don't know, 12 years, I think, is what it was. So, and, and you ended up paying for it. So this is a big difference on that bottom line, you know, monthly housing cost if we can make that happen. And, and the drawback, as, as we've already mentioned, is we've got to get the school district and the county to agree to take a bit of a loss in property tax to make that happen. And that's probably the only hurdle that I see there.
Okay, thank you.
So that workforce housing sales tax, that's, that's our money. We can pretty much do whatever we want with it, right?
Exactly.
As long as we approve it and, okay. So I mean, thinking of like the first RHID scenario, you know, if, if somebody said, hey, I need $75,000 instead of doing an RHID, or if it were to get vetoed or something like that, we could then just say, okay, well, we're, we'll cover that with, with the sales tax instead of doing this RHID kind of thing.
Yeah, potentially. I would say that in that first, the, the first RHID that we're looking at that mimics a benefit district, what I was showing you is $110,000 just for one lot. So if we're doing a benefit district, that's typically, you know, 20, 30 lots, something like that. That starts to add up pretty quick.
Yeah.
And so I think what staff's recommendation is, is wherever we can utilize that workforce housing sales tax where there's not another program that could help to cover that, that cost.
Sure, okay.
But yeah, we could. We could use that workforce housing sales tax to help with an RHID if, if we needed to, to get to the, the bottom, or make the bottom line work.
Okay.
And the, the other thing, you had the locations there, like the cottage houses. And, and I understand some of that is not allowed based on our developmental code. And especially the auxiliary dwelling units. We had huge discussion on that. And, you know, I just assume not see that be tried. But if a developer wants to try one of those other ones, I would think if something comes forward, that we might consider changing it. Like for that cottage thing or some of those row houses.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to all those, but not the auxiliary dwelling unit thing.
Okay.
I think we should be more flexible with, with the rules and regulations. But I do think it's really important, particularly for the older neighborhoods, to make sure we stick with a comprehensive land use plan. The densities in some of those are situational and there may be areas where you can easily add some infill housing. And there may be other areas. I noticed when I was driving on Osage on the east side of the park, with parking on both sides of the street, if I met somebody, one of us is going to have to back up. So I mean, I think there's areas where you can add infill, where you can add more sort of concentrated housing. And I really don't think there's anything wrong with additional housing units. I think we have a lot of those AUDs or.
Accessory.
Accessory, thank you. You know, have somebody in my neighborhood put a studio over their garage would not really add to the, the density of, of the situation. So maybe we need to just visit those. I would point out, however, it'd be interesting to know how much tax infam, 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 financing we have done throughout the city. And if I'm on the school board or the county, I'm not getting these dollars coming in, and I need X dollars to do the things that one needs to do, then I tend to raise the property tax amount that I'm asking for. So, you know, we're all very concerned with keeping the property tax level as, as reasonable as possible. And though, there can be a sort of pressure on schools and the county to pay for those things which they have to do.
Okay, and I think we've got some folks that wanted to comment.
There's one, Jason was going to make a few remarks, just kind of cautioning you on, on some of the, the opposition you might hear to some of these programs.
There's a couple of topics we want to get into this evening. I also want to give you just a brief overview where we're at from an economic development standpoint. Our processes and our policies were put in place early 2000s. They were revisited in 2010, about a year, year and a half.
About a year, year and a half ago, we came before the governing body looking for direction on possibly hiring Baker Tilly to come in and help us relook at that policy and those procedures and and redefine those. It wasn't something we were willing to to explore at that time, but it's also a topic that hasn't gone away. You have a lot of folks in the audience, and you have a lot of folks that call city staff and work with the chamber. Housing and economic development are starting to overlap in a lot of communities. And it's something that we're looking for direction this evening in terms of just how to respond to individuals and groups and investors in your community who are looking to leverage these tools. In 2000, that policy and that procedure was very much focused on large capital investments with significant jobs. And we've got a lot of people who have come before you who haven't necessarily fit just those two categories. We've considered different applications for IRBs, we've considered different applications for a variety of different tools. But economic development funding, where we've landed anywhere from $2,500 a job up to $10,000 a job. And significant capital investments where it's generating a tremendous return to the city, the county, the school district, and the state. Where we look at all the revenues generated from those applications. We we've been very consistent in our policies, but our practices, we'd really like to modify to to streamline that. We have a relationship with the chamber, it's a good one, it's been in existence for for some time. We're not advocating for any changes there. I just want to point out two things. One, what the tax actually says today and how that 70%, 20% and 10% are defined. The other thing that I would want to highlight is the existing policies in terms of how that application flow is anticipated throughout the the process. Some of these things, and I think we're we're finding it with even economic development. You know, Ron and I meet with with Jason and Darren quite often. And there are a number of inquiries that come even from folks in this room looking to leverage tools from the city. They don't fit in a really nice neat little box and a nice neat little application. So there's a lot of conversation we have internally about what is it we're going to do with that interest? And how do we facilitate that discussion? Tonight, you have probably at least three applicants who want to come before you requesting tools to further their residential affordable housing type of project. The current policies and procedures really do, they aren't clear. And it's not concise on how we address these things. All three of them, I told them, come tonight, you're going to have five minutes eventually. Submit anything in advance, which I hope you all received and were able to take a look at. But they're they're attempting to leverage tools that we currently can create, but don't have general guidance from the commission and don't check in with the commission every couple of years to see if you want to continue to do this. Blade Magis is in the audience, just a few weeks ago, came before you all looking for an IRB construction sales tax exemption. Our policies right now are really more about that massive investment and those jobs. Blade's making a significant investment in our community. But that property taxes he's going to generate at his facility are probably not going to vary a whole lot from what he generates today. But his project was enticing, it was something we found attractive as an organization and as a governing body. You decided, you gave direction, move forward with that IRB. That that policy doesn't necessarily give Ron or I or city administration a lot of direction on what you're willing to consider and what you're not. So everything just comes before you, and it it slows things down. It's not as streamlined as we see in other communities. And that's the type of update we're trying to engage with you all this evening. I'll just start real quick with where we're at on the 70, 2010. This is this is all information that you you've seen before. Just a quick reminder, that question here in Green is basically a big part of what was on the ballot. We split the use of that money, that point five, into 70% for debt and infrastructure, 20% for jobs, 10% for workforce housing. We then go on to kind of describe what that means, what those initiatives include. And then here, we're looking for guidance and direction on, for the 70% and the bond and interest, we're typically supporting infrastructure project we've issued debt on. We're looking for an annual process. I lean towards the budgeting process where you you highlight the bond and interest fund. You show the revenue stream going into that fund, covering the majority of projects in the future as a result of North Campus Corridor and Aggieville. That 56 million roughly that we will generate over the next 10 years will more likely be absorbed within those two projects. We have done those projects, we have issued debt on the north 50 plus million almost entirely. But we have not started paying on all that debt. We've only started to pay on the first project on College Avenue. So it's really another 10 years of revenue going to the bond and interest to help support those projects. Aggieville is the same way. We haven't started paying on any of the debt in Aggieville yet, but we've issued close to $30 million. That debt is going to start coming due as well. So we're putting money into the bond and interest fund earmarking it for those two projects. We haven't started paying those projects off yet, so that money is accumulating. But annually, it should just be a recognition by the commission that those revenues are there to pay those projects, and you approve the budget, and we move it through. That's really 70% of the total. And I think we can accomplish that, but we don't have an existing policy that lays that out, so everybody understands how that's going to be done. The 20% falls back into the the policies that we have today, they're attached in your packet. There there is one piece of the existing packet that I do think is is important just to draw attention to. And it's page seven of that ED process and procedures. And it's really just how the flow of funds occurs in the in the application process. We put this together over 20 years ago, and it still works fairly well today. And it for the traditional ED approach, where people are investing multiple millions and they're generating hundreds of jobs. You know, Civics Plus is a great example, Bev Hub, another, really our last two that were about significant capital investments and holding themselves, us holding them accountable to create the jobs at a certain rate. This process, this application, it works well. It could use some tweaks, there's some things about the process and the deliverables that we've tweaked over time, but the policy stayed the same. We'd really just like to clean that up, streamline it, make it simpler. This policy is, it's it's lengthy, I mean, it's 27 pages. That's not something a developer just runs out and wants to start reading when we call. They call and you go, hey, how do I leverage EcoDevo funds? We can, we can streamline this and narrow it down and summarize it a little bit better. I think our partnership at the chamber has been excellent, it's a great two way street, we bounce a lot of things off each other. Eventually, we we get into that mode of we move that application forward. I can't stress enough how this has changed over time. More and more people are calling, more and more people are emailing, more and more people are looking to dip into these incentives. It's not just Manhattan. Cities much smaller than us keep reaching out to us for how did you do it 10 years ago, 20 years ago? Because we're trying to catch up ourselves. And developers, even in those smaller communities, are leveraging those governmental entities for whatever they can in order to offset some of those capital costs upfront. So this is a changing environment. Salina has a housing policy that is very aggressive. Took them six years to come up with it because there's enough controversy about governments getting involved in incentivizing housing. The recommendations that Stephanie showed you, there's a lot of emphasis on RHIDs in subdivisions in new residential areas. It's hard to do RHIDs in fill development. They concentrated their IRBs, their industrial revenue bonds, on their infill. They concentrated RHIDs on the new subdivision growth, and they've been very successful. Dodge City was brought to town by the chamber, which excellent speaker came in, some of you I know were there. They've been 20 plus years of rolling out RHIDs with no restrictions, no geographic locations, no price points that are off limits. That's how desperate for housing they've been, and they continue to be. Some of these programs, some of these policies, we recognize we're going to have to take some risks. We recognize we can put them in place, we can monitor them, we can see how they're about, you know, evaluate them, we can stop them. But something is happening around us, something is happening in this state, something is happening across this country where more and more are coming to the governmental agencies looking for this this room to to operate. Additional incentives. So I, these policies are good, I just wanted to go through, they were developed a long time ago, they work well. Where do we need to transition so we're more streamlined and we're more customer friendly to the folks who are looking for these things? A lot of it comes back to you, what you're willing to tolerate, what you're willing to put down on paper, follow through with. I do think the commission has been very gracious and very accommodating in the recent past. But there's more pressure coming.
So, pretty much, you're you're saying we, our current policy, that's almost 15 years old, is pretty vague. Doesn't really give a lot of guide rails. But at the same time, we kind of need something that is direct, but allows for things to move quickly. How can we, like, I don't know, I guess, I'd like to avoid, yes, I I would like to for it to be easy for folks to know if they're going to qualify. But I I want to not go as far as to allow anybody who's going to open up, you know, a McDonald's or any type of commercial investment in town to expect some type of incentive from the city. So like, what kinds of of guide rails and things like that are out there that that we can look to use?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of communities have tackled this and have created those policies with general guidance. I I would say we actually have a policy right now that is very specific. You you need to invest significant amount of dollars in capital. You need to generate jobs, as you can see on this sheet right now, that have hourly wages at a minimum. And your community fit and your score is going to all depend on how much you're paying these folks. We spent a lot of time in this room over the last 25 years debating wages. And what is, what should the city be incentivizing and what should the city not be incentivizing when it comes to wages? So this policy drills it down, I mean, it's very clear. If you're going to, if you're going to fit that mold and invest 20, 30, 40 million dollars in our community and generate 250 jobs at over 50K, that glide path is very easy to navigate. It's it's all the other things that are happening, two, three million dollar investment on this corner to take this piece of property and convert it to that. Historically, I would say people just wouldn't come to the city and address you all because they have to air everything. And that was just, it was a deterrent. Today, I don't think that's a deterrent anymore. People are willing to come and and air it all. It's not a, it's not a point of, I got to share everything with the public, I got to be accessible, I got to show them all, everything I'm doing. People are very willing to do that right now.
Yeah, I think, you know, the argument can be made that, you know, something like what Blade's doing downtown, those type of quality of life projects could fit into an economic development structure because when those giant, those big investments come into town, one of the things they're going to ask is, do we have somewhere for our employees to live? Are employees going to be able to entertain themselves on the weekends, things like that? So have there been successes with things like that 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 aren't necessarily, like you said, you know, going to bring in a huge increase in property tax and going to employ, you know, no offense, Blade, but you're not going to employ more than, you know, 10 people a night if you if you got a show. That's not a huge return for the city, but financial return. But, you know, when it comes to having a community that is welcoming, I think that that does bring a very large return. So how can we kind of quantify those types of things?
Yeah, I think there's examples we can bring back to you to try to do this. It's 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 not overly simple. I do think the commission is going to wrestle around with some scenarios and situations that other communities had said, yes, we'll go ahead and fund and incentivize that. And perhaps Manhattan won't. I think housing is the same way. Housing is such a complicated animal. It's very complicated. There are a lot of people who have made, they're living on housing, there are a lot of people who own additional homes in this town. I liken housing to a lot of hotel discussions. Anybody who owns a hotel doesn't like it when a new one's proposed. It's competition, it's more inventory, and it's going to impact the ability for me to occupy what I have. I don't think it's a whole lot different for housing. You got that mentality, and then you got the mentality of it's 5, 6, 7% to borrow money to go do that project. Housing study says we need it. Is the city going to help? Is the city going to get in the way? What is, what is the city's role? And it's evolved. Our role with housing, when Roger Schultz came to build on the northeast side of town, where he said he could bring houses in for under 100K, Roger did that for about a few months, and then they went from 88,000 to 150 in a very short period of time. The demand outpaced his ability to control the price. It is just such an interesting dynamic in our community. If we start incentivizing housing, it's not as if we're we're an anomaly. But there are reactions that you all will receive on that topic. Economic development is no different. What has been done in the past is is not the approach a lot of folks are taking. And I I'm not talking about the chamber's 20% of the sales tax. I'm talking about the use of CIDs, which are community improvement districts, where somebody slaps on additional sales tax in the mall. The point 75 that you pay when you shop at the mall, that's over and above the 9.15 that's already in existence. Again, sales tax may or may not recognize it, but those tools are out there and they're in place. The ability to leverage IRBs, property tax abatements, sales tax exemptions on construction. Those are, those are multimillion dollar benefits that, again, aren't part of the 20% that the chamber manages, but they are part of incentive tools that come before you individually. We have policies in place, they're old, and and it's like, you always have the discretion to go beyond what's written down on paper. And in the past five to seven years, commissions exercise that. And it's difficult for administration to hand somebody a policy and say, here's the policy, but here are the examples of what the commission's done in the last five to seven years. But they're difficult, they're difficult things to all agree on, so the bullet points are the same, and you apply those. That's why those policies go into existence and they're hard to change. Lots of opinions on what to do. So I don't want to spend a whole lot more time, and there's a lot of people that want to talk about housing and those those incentives. I just wanted to bring this up as a topic that we are willing and ready, and and in some instances, I think we should marry housing and economic development in our policy formulation. So we we're treating and reacting to those applications in a similar fashion. Whether that's, you know, point of contacts, relationships with the chamber or other professionals in this community that you want us to run it through. We have an ROI model that looks at the return on that investment over a 20 year life. We take into account property tax increases, sales tax generated from wages. There's a lot of factors that go into the reports we provide you all. We want to be consistent with both of these topics because they're both very important, and they're both being pursued very diligently in this in this community from you all.
Yes, if I could just say, I think that I don't find the economic development fund process and procedures to be vague or complex. I mean, it's, and it's 31 pages because the application is attached. The the policy itself is about half that. And a lot of that is formula, laying out what it is, that what the criteria are for assessment. So I I read through it yesterday, I think it's a fine document. If you want, if it needs to be modified to include housing considerations, that's certainly a discussion that we can have with staff. Um, I, I would take uh. Some disagreement with one of your opening comments about um. Needing to streamline processes so that more decisions could be made in-house by staff. I certainly respect the staff, I've mentioned several times privately to different people. How impressed I was as I've been meeting people throughout the last several months. But I think um, it's moving into dangerous territory to authorize staff to make a lot of. Economic or housing decisions without bringing those uh, discussions to the commission. So that the public can hear what is being proposed and what some of the pros and cons are for those. Um, so I would just caution, um, I appreciate needing to make the best use of staff time, I appreciate the need to streamline processes for the developers. Um, but I think we also need to remember our obligation to be clear and transparent with the public. And who are paying the taxes that we're using for these activities.
Yeah, Jason, just uh, people may not be aware of it, but like, in, in this year's budget, economic development, we used it for. What specific things, Manhattan area technical college comes to mind and that was of course. It didn't fit with this policy either.
Right. Right, there's a lot of things we talked about during the budget process that have economic development fund impacts. And it's not just last year, it's the last several. So we do, you know, we do have a transparent conversation about the use of those funds, it's very open, it's very public. But it, it's not, it's just not outlined in a policy.
Right, so we, we, we've done that and I think, you know, M A T C, you know, I don't, I don't remember exactly what the amount was, I think it, it goes over a couple of years.
Yep.
But uh. You know, that didn't fit the, the traditional model that we had, and of course, then we've got that scorpion thing that may or may not happen. That, that we fenced money for, so, you know, uh. I think I worked on the policy that we've got now many years ago. And, and we, we struggled with it and I think it's, it, it's a good one for. The traditional economic development idea of bringing in a company. But perhaps we, we do need maybe a, you know, a separate track that would cover something like an M A T C. Or a housing thing if that would, that would assist. And, and, and I know the commission would still have the final word on that, but at least uh. At least people would understand that, okay. Say perhaps you are a nonprofit. Are we gonna allow a nonprofit to apply for economic development money because they won't pay taxes? You know, things like that maybe need to be lined out in there and that, that would streamline it to a certain extent. So, so I'm in favor of pursuing, pursuing that so that uh, we, we cover some of those exceptions we've made over the years.
Is there, uh, I just had an idea sitting up here, is there a way, and if any of you uh. Don't want this, that's fine, but could we have like a single application for? Incentives, right, if you are going to build something, you have an application for an incentive. Um, you outline your project, it goes to city staff who then goes through it and says, well, I think this could fit in. This bucket of tools and then presents it to us as a commission. Um, as a recommendation of, hey, here's, we went through this, here's why we think it fits in here. Um, and then, you know, folks are, are free to kind of apply as they wish and, you know, I don't wanna put more. Um. More burden on the staff uh, to have to go through all of these applications, it kinda sounds like you're getting them already. Um. But, you know, that way it can be a little bit more, um. A little bit more streamlined, I guess, um, where it can then be filtered out. Once we get the application in, um, it doesn't have to be specific, kinda the opposite of what we're doing with our committees. Um, where we, we can just have someone apply for interest of an incentive and we can say, well, no, this doesn't really fit anything we have, or. Hey, it might fit in this thing, we can be, kind of be creative in that way.
Yeah, I think that's the type of direction we're looking for, Commissioner. And I do think, I mean, we, we have shared, the city of Lawrence has a economic development uh, slash tools slash housing. They have a streamlined application, I mean, checkbox is what you're after, it runs through an internal process for review against policy. Get reactions. Um. I, I. As a practitioner over the last twenty-five years, there are a number of people who've walked in the door who don't really know how it works. They don't know what they're applying for, they're just looking, they're exploring, they're fishing. That is part of our job to sift through that. It is part of our job to look at the past practices and give them feedback. Because everything it's going to take for them to get in front of you to make a proposal. Is gonna cost them tens of thousands of dollars to go put together. I don't like wasting their money and their time. So I, I think our past experiences, our policies, our applications do provide them. A playing field that they realize that they can either join and participate in, or it's just not for them. That is our role and our, i- in my opinion, it is our responsibility. Because I've watched developers put tens of thousands of dollars into an effort and it get turned down. And, and they're basing a lot of that on the feedback and reactions they get from staff. I wanna make sure we're speaking in terms and giving guidance based on the policies you all put together. The application, the streamlined side of things, other communities have done it. I'm looking for, for that opportunity here.
Okay, thanks, Jason, I guess we're gonna allow some public comment on the, the topic. And just uh, the rules of the game, uh, you're only allowed to speak once. And there's a five-minute time limit and I guess we'll be controlling that and there'll be a little beeper that goes off. And uh, I don't have a list of who signed up first.
I don't think we have.
Not one, so if anyone wants to make public comment, just come forward, state your name and address and.
I'm Marla Clausen and my wife Jean is here with me and I've, I'm gonna hand something out to you real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have a, uh, we live at thirty-nine fifteen Victory Drive and we purchased the home in twenty-twenty-two. Along with three lots. And uh. What I mainly wanna talk to you about is just the specials. Uh, starting in twenty-twenty-five, the lot that our house is on right now, the specials are four thousand thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Starting in twenty-twenty-five. I got ahead of them, there we go, okay, there we go.
That's, yeah.
Starting in, in twenty-twenty-five, one of the empty lots, the specials are gonna be five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventeen cents. The other lot with a shed on it is gonna have the same. Special at five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventeen cents. And then the third lot, the empty lot, is gonna be five thousand seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. If you add those up. That comes to nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. In twenty years, we will pay. Three hundred and ninety-four thousand dol- seven hundred and sixty-four. Thousand dollars and forty cents in twenty years for one homeowner. Our question is, you know, first of all, one of the lots is figured with the house on it is figured. By square, square footage and the other three are figured by lot. If you took all of those lots and figured them by square footage. You would cut that amount, the total amount in the twenty years almost in half. And if, you know. Part of the thing that we're, you know, we, we were the first ones to move up on the hill there and uh. Part of it was that uh. The taxes and specials were not gonna be as high since it wasn't part of Grand Mir. And uh. We uh, we kinda feel like we kinda got blindsided a little bit here when we visited with the city about. What our specials were gonna be and. The fact that these are basically, well, they are, they're empty lots. We just, we're, we're struggling with, with this amount of money to pay in specials. And then if you look, if you look on the second page, uh, you take and add in the taxes, I mean, you're looking at. Spending twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents a year just in taxes and specials. I guess what we're trying to do is, is figure out a way that. We can do something. Uh, other than having to. Sell it and move somewhere else where it's less expensive to live. I think our biggest question is, is. Why do we figure one lot by square footage and then another lot just by lot? And, you know, I, I don't wanna go into all kinds of comparisons with like the house next door on how much theirs is. Because their lot is smaller and, and therefore their specials are quite a bit less. But uh, there just doesn't seem to be much equity. And uh. I have no idea how many millions of dollars it costs to dig through all that rock to put a road and sewer line and, and water line in, but I, I imagine it wasn't cheap. So I, I guess we're, we're looking at some way that this could be spread out over more. More people than just having, I mean, almost four hundred thousand dollars seems like a pretty big chunk of money for one family to. To put forth for, for just specials. And that's our concern.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Brandon Savage, I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Manhattan Area Habitat for Humanity. Um, we applaud this discussion, we're, we're happy anytime that there is. Uh, real efforts made to try to make housing more affordable, particularly for our work, workforce housing population. I know some of you were able to attend our home dedication last month down in Ogden, across the street from the Ogden. Uh, elementary school where, uh, you know, three-bedroom, two-bathroom home uh, was completed. Um, through the efforts of a lot of different partnerships here in the community. Uh, that is part of a cottage um, development that will have three houses that will be um, right there. We are, we think most of the things that have been shared today are very beneficial and we would give a wholehearted endorsement. And Josh will talk a little bit more about some of the things that, that we do, but the RH IDs would be great, anything that would incentivize developers to be able to build. Um, this workforce house, workforce housing. Um, but I do want to share that, just, you know, we talk about perception is reality. And as we work with various entities and municipalities in the, the northern Flint Hills area. The perception that we've had of the city of Manhattan um, is that. They don't want workforce housing within Manhattan um, city limits. Now, that's puzzling because we know the city commissioners have all, you know, said housing is important, so we are excited. To, to hear once again, everyone wants workforce housing on, on the current commission. Um, we hope that things will be different than in the past. Um, is this an example of where that perception comes from for us? Is M I H, M I H grants that have been talked about here? You know, we've had a plan put together for M I H grants of, of what we would want to do within the, the boundaries of the city of Manhattan. And the city has um, refused to give the signature to just apply, hoping that we might. Be awarded that grant and then have the opportunity to try to put it all together. Um, and we've went as far to go to the county and say, well, county, you can sign it and it's still within the county. And the county initially was like, yeah, that sounds great until they backed off um, for some reason. So we hope to see that change. We would strongly encourage as you're trying to define what is workforce within this community. Um, you know, a hundred and twenty percent over AMI, no, it needs to go lower than that. Um, you know, when you look at a, a pair of professionals being paid at the, the, the school district, they're getting ten dollars an hour. Um, we'd look at teachers, what they're getting paid, this is that workforce, those are the type individuals who need these type of, of houses within our community. The perception is that Manhattan is okay with those type of homes being in some of our neighboring communities, but not here. And you look at our policies as to what can be built here. That's currently true. We would also encourage that as you're looking at incentives for developers to be able to build these type of communities. Not just look at ways to say, hey, can we still build this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and find some way to subsidize it down so it can be passed on a lower cost? But how can we build the right-sized house um, efficiently? And I love the fact that there was concerns about the total cost of ownership for a, a, a home buyer. Um, we would hope, you know, the, the home that we've recently built in Ogden is a high-performance home. It's got a heat pump, it's got solar panels, the total cost of ownership for that home. Over the course of twenty, thirty years is much less than the standard house of what we kinda build in our communities right now and we would hope. There'd be encouragement to developers to, to look for ways to, to build that type of house. We know it can be done, we'd love to share what we've learned as we've built these homes and we'd love to partner with whatever entities. That, that want to build this type of housing within our community, so thank you.
Yeah, please, please sign in, I failed to make that clear, you'll need to come back up and, you did, okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jill Jacoby, I'm the Executive Director of Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. And we have developed um, affordable housing, eight developments in Manhattan. Since two thousand and three, I think, and we actually started with Roger Schultz. And um, continue to have our partnerships with Schultz Construction and Excel Development. We um, are looking to build a new senior housing, we, we see um. Importance in people being able to age in place, have affordable and accessible housing. And um, based on our last housing development Canyon Creek, we know that there's a big need for that. I think in the last um, summary that was done, it showed that there was a need for more um, senior housing. We. See a connection between kinda the economic development and how the benefits are to the community by building our tax credit housing. Um, people um, retire or get to the age where they wanna maybe downsize. So they're, if they're homeowners, their property goes on the market. Or they're able to maintain um, living in the same community by reducing their income and being able to afford, afford a really. Um, nice home where they won't have to move again. Um, some people, uh, it will provide more stability, will decrease the homelessness uh, population for some people that struggle. Um, with affordable housing and we do target sixty percent and below. We've done forty to sixty percent of the AMI, we accept section eight vouchers. And um, we have a variety of people that live in our housing. Um. Rents are reasonable and um, the housing is, is very nice. We'd like to see incentives such as the property tax abatement. Um, the sales tax exemption. I know in our application to KHRC, they look at how the community is supporting, maybe waiver of fees, which you guys have been very generous in, in the past. Um, but they do like to see community support and um, city involvement in, in our developments. Uh. Variety of housing, you know, Habitat, Housing Authority, there's no one box that is gonna be. Is gonna fit for everyone, so a variety of places, you know, duplexes with garages and safe rooms like we built in the past. Downtown apartments, um, everybody's gonna have a different need and desire, so I think having a variety of housing in the community is very important. Um, for people. And I know that our staff believes that um, everything begins at home, um, housing first and then. You know, people prosper, they can maintain their jobs, kids do better in school. Uh, people are more healthy if they have um, adequate housing. So we feel it's very important to provide all different types of housing and to provide more senior housing in the community as people. and to provide more senior housing in the community as people are needing that. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Josh Brewer. As Brandon said, I'm the Executive Director here at the Manhattan Area Habitat for Humanity. Before I get started, I do want to commend Stephanie for a really great presentation of a lot of information there. And I was taking notes and I just want to comment on a few pieces here. In the demand projections, Susan, I think you commented on, on that demand projection, that chart, sorry Karen. And I want to go back and look at a caveat of that. On the previous page, it says that we estimate that Manhattan will need between twenty-eight hundred and forty-four hundred additional units of housing over the next twenty years. But that is assuming a decrease in the overall vacancy from twelve percent to eight percent. And that we estimate that eight hundred units could be met through renovation of existing housing. So that rent, that assumption is a really big assumption. We need to lower the vacancy rate, and that's, Peter, what you were talking about there. And we need to renovate those homes. And many of those homes exist in our downtown core. That's really difficult work. We have a home preservation program. We just completed our first critical home renovation in St. George, and that was a very, very difficult and very expensive project. So if that's something that we're serious about, the workforce strategy, workforce housing strategy needs to address renovation, rehabilitation, and most importantly, preservation of existing units because we cannot lose any more units. So I want to make sure that we highlight that. Also appreciate the question about the shared equity models, the community land trust, the shared equity cooperative model. We have a very successful shared equity cooperative here in Manhattan, Prairie Glen. The people who live there really love it. It seems like the units turnover with a, a low enough frequency that it's stable, but also that they can find buyers. And we're happy to announce as of next Tuesday, we will have the first community land trust in Riley County. We've been working on that for two years now. I know Donna Scheck-Hamlin's been studying that for probably four years. And the home over across from Ogden Elementary will be the first unit of what is called the Good Steward Community Land Trust Program. So a shared equity model is really important because this is expensive work. And when we subsidize, because we are talking about subsidizing housing, we want to make sure we don't have to turn around and do this again and again and again. And your only other option for that is a deed restriction. So shared equity models like a community land trust, or if you're looking at the renter end of the tenancy, a shared equity cooperative, that gives you a little bit more flexibility in the model than the extremes, which are full ownership of the home and full risk of homeownership and no equity in the home, but, you know, you, you have very little risk as a renter. So those models need to be explored, especially if we're talking about preserving the subsidy that the taxpayers are paying for. We, we wholeheartedly support missing middle housing. As, as Brandon said, the home development we're doing that we did the ribbon cutting on, that is a cottage cluster. That is classic missing middle. That let us take a very large lot across from the elementary school and put three twelve-hundred-square-foot, three-bed, two-bath homes right on it. Those homes are award-winning. They are recognized by national foundations. They're recognized by corporate sponsors. They're built by students in this community. They're built by community members. And we are very, very proud of those units. And we think, to Jason's point, that when we're talking about having a simplified application process, we have developed the plan sets that would be appropriate for this community. We've spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, K-State architecture designed them. They are very high-performance plans, and we would like to make those available to the community if that simplifies the application process. And we have homes throughout historic neighborhoods in Manhattan. We know that those plan sets could also be available to our community housing developers. So with that, I would just say that from my very first day in this job, I called Jason, I said, I noticed that we don't have a strong partnership with the city of Manhattan and I want to change that. And three years later, we've made a lot of progress. I really commend city staff for, for that work. And we want to continue developing that partnership and want to play a vital role in addressing workforce housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Smith, President and CEO of Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Glad to be here. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you to talk about these issues. First, I want to briefly also reiterate what Josh said and how much we appreciated Stephanie's presentation. Thought she did a great job. Chamber supports the city, looking at, at elements that improve our housing situation. And, and these programs are being used in other places and, and we're excited that you all are considering that and will be your partner in helping convince other entities that these maybe are good ideas. But I want to talk specifically about the economic development sales tax. And there's a couple of things. First of all, I agree with ninety-nine point nine percent of what Jason said on this issue. The one area I will deviate a little bit is, I think we've done a pretty good job for small businesses too, using the economic development sales tax historically. And we've incented some small businesses and I think they found the process to be okay. It obviously was designed for people who make larger investments, but that didn't preclude smaller businesses from taking advantage of that as well if they were creating jobs. And, and in fact, just last year, you created the, the, or the, the loan fund for startups and that's going to be all to small businesses. And so I commend you for that and, and think we have made some, some inroads. But I want to talk for a minute about, because I, I, I agree with Jason's frustration and Darren has it and Ron has it and a lot of us have it. Is, and I think it, the issue is, we made a significant change in our economic development sales tax in the last year, but I don't think we've changed our language and we don't, we've not changed our expectations yet. So for twenty-five years, we had a quote-unquote economic development sales tax in this community and started with Metta Fab in ninety-five and then two rounds that, of the Raleigh County Economic Development Sales Tax that ended in two thousand and twenty-two. There was a lot of consternation, a lot of debate through that period about what economic development was, what qualified. And there was frustration at the chamber. There was frustration at city. There was frustration in the community about exactly what that all entailed. And, and so in two thousand and twenty, when the discussions began on the new sales tax, which we don't call economic development, we call economic recovery, there was a discussion about how can we eliminate these debates going forward? And the decision was made that we are going to set aside a relatively small percentage, but a percentage that specifically, and it's in the ballot language, has jobs. That was done to prevent a lot of the frustrating discussions going forward about what exactly economic development was. We said the seventy percent is for all these other things, infrastructure, all these community development projects. Ten percent's for housing, twenty percent is for jobs. But we haven't changed necessarily how we define that and how we discuss that. But, but I think from the chamber standpoint going forward, and because the ballot language has specifically stated that, we're going to ask that the commission, as they have these discussions going forward, continue to use the twenty percent for jobs initiatives or jobs projects. We think any incentive should be performance-based so that the company should, should do what they say they're going to do before they receive those incentives or have an agreement that states they'll repay them. There needs to be some type of return on investment model like we have now. It may need be, may need to be tweaked. But if there's not benefit to the city long-term, then it's not something necessarily the city should be investing in. And then the last item is, we really, and this goes back a little bit to Commissioner Opel's question on jobs, we need to focus these on primary jobs. So jobs that are selling products and services outside of Manhattan, that's the only way we're going to generate new, new revenue for the community, for businesses, for the city, for the county, for the entities here, is if we bring in new money to the economy. And so we would say limit that, limit that to primary jobs with the very limited exceptions. And, and that, long-term, that's going to be what benefits the community and city coffers the most. So with that, just I'll close that we're in the process of updating the economic development strategic plan. We're using all private dollars to pay for that. So we've not asked for any city dollars to, to update that. But one of the items that we'll look at, working closely with the city staff and, and commissioners, is any recommendations on updating incentive policies and, and best practices across the country? And is there something that we can be doing to encourage more job growth in Manhattan? Encourage more commercial investment in Manhattan and tax, and more tax base in Manhattan? So with that, appreciate again the dialogue. Hopefully we can continue it. But I think part of the discussion needs to be that we have fundamentally changed economic development tax collection policy going forward and, and understanding what that means when we talk to people who have great projects but don't necessarily fit into the jobs bucket.
Okay, thank you.
Saw it up here. Hi, my name is Josh Adrian. I represent the Prime Company here tonight. I live at seventeen thirty-four Senior Crest. For those of you that don't know, because it's been over a decade since the Prime Company's built anything in the state of Kansas, we've, we've, we're based here in Manhattan. This is our, is our company. We employ a lot of people here. And we have architecture firm, construction firm, and management firm, and we seek to build Jesus, build apartments for the Kingdom of Jesus. That's what we're about. This is what we do. We've been doing stuff in California, Colorado, Texas, Florida, mostly. You can see this is what we've been, where we've been working. But we base right here out of Manhattan, and so we're really proud of that. And we've been wanting to build something in Manhattan for a long time. One of the things that we do that's kind of unique just from other apartment complexes, we employ a nonprofit called Resident Life, who is at all of our complexes. And their purpose is just to build community at our apartment complexes, to make it a better place to live. They throw, they put on like, you know, all sorts of different events throughout the week, just to make it a great place to live. We are trying to move forward with a development out on Scenic Drive that I wanted to share briefly with you guys about. That Scenic Woods development, really only half of it got built back in two thousand and twelve. And so we are trying to do four phases of affordable housing, Lytech nine percent project on that site. And as our previous speaker talked about, we want to bring money into our community. And we think this is a great opportunity for the city to leverage some of their funds to bring in a pile of state and federal funds to our community to solve some of these problems that we have. This is where the site's at. One of the unique things here is that Highland Ridge Apartments across the way there has just come out of affordability, is no longer a Lytech program. And so those hundred and, what's it like, a hundred and forty-some units at Highland Ridge used to be affordable. They're no longer affordable. And so we're trying to replace and help our community affordability standard out just across the way there. Our Phase One will be forty-four units. And those units are going to be targeted rent rates from seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to fourteen-hundred dollars. They would income target between thirty-one and sixty-four thousand dollars. Our project's a little bit different than that typical Lytech program as we are going to have mixed in, middle income in there as well. So it'll go all the way from thirty to eighty percent to try to meet a broader swath of, of the community's needs. These are just some design concepts of what it'll be, but it's going to be a very nice new apartment complex. You know, Stephanie got it, did a great job going over RHID, which is a big comprehensive thing. So is Lytech. I know most people don't have a great understanding of how Lytech works, but there's two basic areas of scoring and one would be location-based scoring. And our project actually does a great job in location-based scoring. We actually get maximum points in those six different categories up there. And so we think we have an incredibly competitive site for, for the program. This year, there were fifty-three, or fifty-six applications for the nine percent program and the preliminary application. Last year, only twelve got funded, so it is highly competitive. The, the piece of the puzzle that we feel like we need to be able to get an award and bring these funds back to our community is for this community support scoring. And in order to get maximum points there, we need a loan or a grant from the city of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. We think that that is a great place to use this workforce housing tax funds that we have. We'd be happy to pay it back over the years when we get to do that, but we, we need some of those funds to be able to score. We need a fee waiver of eighty thousand dollars and a sales tax exemption on construction materials. And we're confident if we can partner with the city and get your guys' support on those things, that this, this project will get funded. And I think that goes right back to the housing report that, that the city worked through in two thousand and twenty-one, which specifically called out supporting community efforts by using the sales tax funds to facilitate workforce housing development. And so over the course of the four phases of this project, we think that it'll unlock forty-eight million dollars of state and federal funds to come into our community, fourteen million dollars of private funds from outside, housing for up to three hundred new workers, a hundred and ninety-five construction jobs, ten ongoing long-term jobs here. Just all the things that come along with stabilized, good housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
I'm Neil Horton. I'm representing BCC Development this evening. We had one of those projects that Jason mentioned that was kind of queued up and ready to go and, and we're ready to present it to the city about a month and a half ago. And, and caught wind that this meeting, this, this presentation was going to be coming up and you all were going to get a chance to learn a little more about some of these incentives, in particular, the RHID is the one that I'm most familiar with. So we, we put our plans on hold and are encouraging you tonight to adopt some of these incentives that Stephanie made the presentation on. I think, I think the RHID really fits the, the new subdivision the best in that those incentives that are offered through the abatement of those specials over time stick with the, the property owner, whether you're the original property owner and decide to live there through the full term of the debt for twenty years or whatever, or any other subsequent property owner that might acquire that property. Those specials are still benefiting that property owner. So the, the incentive really stays with the property, and I think that's important, that it's not a one-time shot, you know, that, that incentivizes some other part of the process. So I would encourage you to support the presentation and offer up those opportunities so we can get started with some of the projects that are in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Craig Lowby, thirty-eight twenty-one Silver Lake Drive, Manhattan, Kansas. I highly recommend with the needs that you see in our community to support what was stated tonight. But I also challenge, and I think they alluded to this, but I think a big piece of this pie is getting, I have someone from Code here, zoning is here. That is a huge piece in making these decisions to get, get us in a position to build houses at a price point. And it starts with zoning and some of the changes at the code level. If you get those together to have those conversations, some of the workforce housing and the prices can potentially come down and be able to build stuff that's cheaper. I've given examples to some other committees I'm on. First house I, I built, four-bed, two-bath in two thousand and fourteen, cost a hundred and three grand to build. It was replicated and it's now twice the cost to build it. Everything's gone up. So subsidizing some of this housing cost, so in what, eight, seven, nine years? It's gone up significantly. And so that build cost allows us, that initial one sold for one forty and the last one that was sold was for two thirty-eight, same house. So again, I highly recommend that you guys get all the people at the plate, have the conversation, change a lot of things, which puts the community in, in a position to be able to build more economically, maybe build more houses. The cluster, I call them like the cluster houses or the cottages. I went to Oklahoma and studied that. There's a community that did this specifically. They put eight single-family homes on point-three acres. Blew my mind. But they found ways to get codes and their ability to build this on that plat, which put them in a position to be able to lower the cost for their output and their sale prices. And so ultimately, there's other communities doing this. I, I think what Habitat's done over in Ogden is a good replicate, but we should replicate that more. And I think there's other options that are out there, but we have to change in our city limits, the codes and the zoning. in our city limits, the codes and the zoning to allow for that to happen. So those are the feedback that I'd have today.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Weeks, seven oh four Mar-a-Lat. I've been to several housing-related meetings that we've had here at the city, and the thing that I want to talk about tonight is the communication between the commission and the staff. So tonight Stephanie asked, what do you want? And so then the commission might say, well, some stuff about housing. And so then they'll come back with data and we'll say, well, here's, here's this. And then you'll say, well, tell us some more. And so we've had this back and forth, like this tennis game of what are we going to do about housing? I think it's really valuable if the commission will direct the staff to put together a point system for projects. So see, if you said to Thomas, hey, if you build this, you get the most points, you're most likely to get the incentive. If you build this, you still can compete, and so we have this list. Josh from Habitat would be happy to give you a plan set that maximizes density, maximizes the amount of cottage homes like Craig was talking about. We could put that together. So Commissioner Opel, I appreciate what you were talking about, making the application more efficient. I think if we went the other way and said, developer, bring us this, and you'll get a better incentive, that would help the developer say, hey, architect, build this, we're going to submit it, because it's really expensive. And an example of that is on casement, we've been working on a project, there's five acres, we recently had it rezoned. Prior to having it rezoned, the owner went through and had a, a plan developed, spent about thirty grand in engineering and architecture fees, they were ready to go. Had a meeting with the city, turns out the code didn't fit. So we postponed it, turned out, then we did a code redevelopment, we massaged it again, couldn't get it to work. And we just kept going back and forth, spending money with engineers, and it just, it turned into a mess and it didn't work. So my recommendation is to have a system where we can say, if you build this, or you bring us this plan that fits these criteria, because it benefits the community in however many ways, then you're more likely to receive these incentives. So hope that helps.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure you guys all know who I am and are tired of hearing me talk about this topic, but here I am again. First off, I want to say that I'm grateful to be where we are today. Standing here in front of the commission, talking about this issue is progress. It's further than we've got probably in twenty years. And while that's frustrating, it's also, I, I don't want to lose sight of that, because it is, it is something, and, and I want to echo everyone else and appreciative of staff's work on this, Stephanie's presentation, their, their expertise is unmatched on this subject, and I would like to see it getting put to use. But what I really want to say is, though I'm grateful that we're talking about it, I don't want it to end here. I want to be able to say that we actually started taking action and doing things. I'm a, I'm kind of a numbers guy and I'm do the real estate stuff, so today I got asked by one of my colleagues to pull some stats, and I thought they were really appropriate for tonight. On February twenty-eighth of two thousand and eighteen, there were three hundred and forty-eight homes on the market in the six-six-five-oh-two and six-six-five-oh-three zip codes with a median price of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Today, in Manhattan, Kansas, there are ninety-four homes on the market with a median price of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We are past the point of getting to a crisis. The crisis is here. It is here today. And I want to really emphasize, and I've said this before in this room, but I'm going to say it again, that it is not just for sale homes that we need. The rental market, there's this perception in Manhattan that we are oversaturated with rentals, and I'm here to tell you that that perception is false. The Simmons and Company does a report, and it's just apartments, so it's only a part of the story, but Craig and Tyler are here, will tell you that, that as well. We are at a ninety-eight percent occupancy rate among houses, among apartments. And when you get outside of the student area, that occupation actually goes up. The availability of rental housing outside of the quote-unquote student area is even less, and the stuff that is available is available for a reason, that, because it's not actual usable housing stock, for whatever reason. So I think that's a really important distinction to make and perception amongst the public that we are going to have to battle, because there, you are going to get pushback, we don't need more rental housing, we don't need more rental housing. That's false. That is false. And as we're talking about the economic development, and I think a lot of really good points were made there too, but when I, in my professional capacity, have talked to people potentially coming here from MBAF, talked to people that are working with people coming here from MBAF, the folks from Plum Island that said, I'm not coming, the number one reason, there's nowhere for me to live. I don't like the housing options that are available. There's nothing there for my, for my family to live in. We're talking about Scorpius, and I think Commissioner Butler, I share your skepticism on the possibility of that happening, but if it does, six hundred jobs, I've got ninety-four homes on the market, guys, and fifteen in Wamigo. And the median price in Wamigo is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of those fifteen homes. We don't, we, we can't, we can't keep doing this. We have to do something. And what we know is, there are one, two, three, four, five developers in this room right now that are ready and willing and ready to go to build this product that we so desperately need, but they can't. They can't because the numbers don't work. There's no way for the market to solve this problem without some sort of subsidy, without some sort of incentive. It just doesn't work. The far left of that scale that Stephanie had up there is, is, still needs things to be done, there's a lot that can be done there, but there are, we've already heard from two great organizations that are addressing that. The Manhattan Housing Authority is another one, though, so the, the far low end of the income stream still needs work, but there's stuff happening. The far high end of the income stream, the market can solve for. What we're talking about is the middle, where there just isn't the profit margin to make these projects work without a little bit of help. And we have lots of different properties that we could talk about in this town that have been grass for decades, because nobody can do anything with, that are going to continue to be nothing unless we do something. So that's, that's what I ask from you. Thank you so much for getting us here, but don't stop here.
Please state your name and address. You didn't do that.
Yeah, sorry, Scott Seal, seventy-eight hundred Washington Boulevard.
Commissioners, good evening. My name's Tyler Holloman. I will keep my comments brief tonight. I submitted a letter that was included in your packet, but I just wanted to briefly talk about infill housing. As a member of the Workforce Housing Steering Committee, you know, one of our strongest recommendations that came out of that committee was to encourage policies and incentives that encourage infill development in our community. Infill development utilizes existing infrastructure. It, it takes land that is otherwise underutilized within our urban boundaries and adds housing units. These are often, you know, areas of town that are walkable, they're, you know, areas that are in our, our core neighborhoods. And not to say that greenfield development is not important, because it is, but infill development can really have a profound impact on the makeup of our community. Infill development also, a lot of times will consist of what you've heard called missing middle. That type of housing is a, is a little bit cheaper to develop per unit, so a developer's able to, to come through and develop a product that is more attainable for the workforce. But oftentimes, due to a variety, variety of reasons, it's not quite affordable to the workforce. And one way to, to get it there is, as Stephanie mentioned, RHIDs. As a development organization, we have actually worked with RHIDs in other communities. We've worked with some of the incentives that, you know, Jason alluded to, that other communities that, you know, oftentimes are, you know, we can, we think that these communities are looking up to Manhattan, it's kind of the other way around right now, as Manhattan, we're looking to these other communities and saying, you know, they've got all these incentives and they have these programs that are out there. But I would strongly encourage you to consider adopting policies and incentives that prioritize infill development and specifically strongly consider, you know, allowing Stephanie and Jason to further explore the RHID program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connor Renard. I'm with Excel Development Group. And I don't know if that's.
It's up to you. You want a picture of it?
Oh, sure, yeah, we can have the picture up there. But I'm a housing developer with Excel Development Group. We're based out of Lincoln, Nebraska, and we focus, we develop throughout the Midwest, and we primarily focus on affordable and workforce housing. And we're a developer on the Cypress Ridge project. I think we might have sent a PDF file to you all, but it's in the Prairie Village neighborhood in Colbert Hills. You know, we partner with Jill and the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, and we also partner with Brett and Schultz Construction, not only on this project, but previous projects, like Jill mentioned. And I just want to, yeah, thank you for all, you know, bringing this, putting this together. As Jason mentioned, you know, housing is a problem everywhere. I was actually, it seems like a while ago, I was in Columbus, Nebraska, there was a workforce housing summit there for the second district, and it pooled together a lot of people. I think the whole Federal Home and Bank staff was there, you know, Freddie, Fanny, some representatives, city officials, you know, developers, you name it. It, it takes a lot of people to get these, especially workforce housing, like somebody mentioned, the missing middle going. It takes a lot of partners to get that right. A lot of banks were there as well, because they're definitely a part of it. But I'm here really for the Cypress Ridge development. It'll be affordable housing development through KHRC. Like somebody mentioned, other developers mentioned before, we really need the fee waivers, and the new thing this year is the sales tax exemption. KHRC is looking for that, just to score, just to be competitive, just because, like somebody else said, you know, there's fifty-four applicants, they only funded twelve last year, so only a quarter of the applicants really, you know, get funded, so it's a competitive resource. And Manhattan actually competes with, they're considered rural, Manhattan's considered rural here, so we, we're competing with other rural areas, and I can tell you, most other developers, you know, they're going to get that fee waiver and sales tax exemption from other cities, and, and they're worth points, and every point counts in these, full disclosure, working on another development in Leavenworth, Kansas, we actually got fee waivers and sales tax exemptions in December of last year, so I mean, that's one development right there that already has it, that this one would be competing against, just by the Walmart there on Eisenhower Road. And also the City of Colby, we're doing a project there currently, same thing, you know, they're offering fee waivers and sales tax exemptions just to get these projects going. So just all that being said, really, if, if we, you know, if the City of Manhattan wants to get one of these affordable housing projects funded this year, it's really competitive without a state, I mean, we're out of state technically, but we've been, we've been here for a while, but there's a lot of other out-of-state people coming in, just because the new state tax credit they have here in Kansas. Let's see here. And then one thing I do want to mention that, so even with, I think there's four developments that are requesting these tax credits this year in Manhattan, and, you know, we might all be asking for them, you know, only, KHRC is only really going to fund two developments. So I mean, there might be four requests for them from the city, but they're only going to fund two developments, that kind of cap that out per city, just to let you know on that end. Just because you might see four of them, I saw there was four different applications sitting from the Manhattan. And then lastly, I just want to say, just on the return on investment, I've seen on prior, on other projects that we've done in Kansas and throughout the Midwest, you know, they're, they're pretty quick, you know, anywhere from four to five years as far as recouping the investment. I feel like it's a pretty minor investment, just because you get the increase in property taxes, income taxes from new residents, and, you know, and most importantly, you get a new affordable housing project that most likely, especially in Kansas, wouldn't have got funded if we, you know, these exceptions, you know, weren't provided, just so it's, it's so competitive and, yes. But anyways, yeah, we're excited. I see the talk, the time clicked in, yeah, to get this project going. We, you know, hopefully, you know, get the city's support and like, like everybody in the audience, and you can see there's, you know, housing is a huge issue, you know, everywhere, and so any little incentive, you know, helps these projects. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, my name's Zach Burton with Fortress, and I live at thirty-six-fifty-one Victory Drive. Everybody's here tonight because there's a need. As you just mentioned, in six-six-five-oh-two and six-six-five-oh-three, we have thirty, ninety-four houses that are for sale. I thought Commissioner McCullough, you brought up a, a great point, that sometimes it's hard to look at something and say, we have, we need a need for thirty-six-hundred homes over the course of the next twenty years, but how does that like affect us today? What's that, what's that mean for next year? That means we need a hundred and eighty homes for next year. That means we need nine hundred homes in five years. And if you start kind of like nailing it down just a little bit and simplifying it to where people can understand, we, we do, we do have a need. If we didn't have a need, these, these programs that we've talked about tonight, there, we just don't, we don't even need to have this meeting. But because we have a need, that's why we're having this meeting. And we have a, we have a development right now that's going to go before the planning board on February the eighth. We've also been, been kind of targeting this to talk about RHID. And it happens to fall within the USD three-seventy-eight school district as opposed to the other applicant who spoke, who's is in the three-eighty-three school district. So I believe it's an opportunity to kind of explore that with both, to maybe not overload one school district, but to put forward two RHID projects where the city can, can speak positively towards those, where you guys can embrace those, and we can really look to do some housing. The development we're doing is eighty percent single-family attached and twenty percent single-family standalone. So as we start talking about development, I think you've heard a lot from Stephanie tonight and Jason, but what they've really done a great job behind the scenes of with developers is really trying to promote different ways to look at development from what we have in the past in the city, to say that every new single-family development that we've done for the last twenty years, or every new development's almost been entirely single-family, to the point now where almost our baseline zoning that we're looking at is single-family attached, which is called RLA. And I think that's a great way to do things too, is to look at it a little differently than what we had before producing some good results. So on an RLA lot, you can either build two small, single-family homes, and those small single-family homes are going to be coming in at the price range that we're talking about, or you can do a duplex. And so it gives us an opportunity to have a denser development if we want to go that route, or some smaller, single-family standalone homes. But it's really a great way, I think, to start to tackle this price problem we have. Not everything has to be a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home. We can have some really nice three-hundred-thousand-dollar homes or two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar homes. And so I just want to commend community development on that, to, to point in that direction ahead of time and start tackling some of these things that the housing study set forth. The other thing I want to talk about is just in workforce housing, Tyler came up and spoke a minute ago and talked about infill housing. I do think there's a need for that, I really do. I think there's some zoning issues we're going to have to tackle to get that pushed forward. But I'll give you an example, if you're, if you're a firefighter, if you're a first responder, if you're a teacher, my parents were both teachers when we grew up, so that's, that's a kind of the, the price range we grew up in as kids. If you have a fourth-story apartment, and it's just you as a single person, that might be attractive in an infill housing project. But if you're married to another teacher and you have two or three kids, I think that we do need to look at workforce housing. It's not, it's, it doesn't need to be an either-or, it can be a both-and, because there's some people who are in need of workforce housing where infill makes a ton of sense, and I think there's some people with workforce housing, for example, a couple of teachers or a teacher and a firefighter who are married and they've got a couple of kids, they might not want to live on the fourth floor of an apartment building downtown, but they need something more on the edge of town where they can have a garage, or they can have a yard that their kids can play in. So I just want to caution us, caution us a little bit, and it's just my opinion only, but I think that when you tackle workforce housing, it's not just only one thing, it's not just focusing on infill, but it can be a both-and solution, whether that's sixty-forty, whether that's thirty-seventy. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something that we have to look at holistically, that it can't just be one thing. And the one other thing I want to point out, and I got just a little bit of time left, and Commissioner McCullough, you have a lot of history, and so I think we can really lean on some of that. You pointed out a, a study that was done in the year two thousand. What's happened from that study? What action steps were taken from that study? We had a similar study done in two thousand and twenty-one, which is three years ago now. What action steps have been taken? Not just conversations, not just back and forth. And that's where I think we have a real opportunity as a community is to step up and to say, we're going to start taking action steps? They might be a little bit wrong sometimes, and Jason's pointed this out with a couple of. And Jason's pointed this out with a couple of projects that I've heard him talk about over the last couple of weeks here at the commission level. It might be a little wrong, but action steps are really gonna make a difference, and so I just want to encourage us all to, to start looking that way.
Is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments and come back to the...
I'll go ahead and go, I want to see us get moving on this. I'm kind of an all-in-the-above that we saw there, and I think we gotta cut down the red tape and make it as simple as possible, as well as get the pathway, and that won't be easy to get done, but I really think we need to have that reputation as a good customer-service community when it comes to this, and really work with people who have these developments to get them right. I also agree with Josh on the preservation of the houses we have, and, and making sure we have some tools for that, and able to have some neighborhood revitalization, which is something I've talked about before. As far as what Jason from the chamber said, I think we do have to look at that sales tax I don't know if your microphone died, or...
Does it work now? Does it work now? No.
Yeah, it was on. That was on.
Now it's on? Okay.
That we need to keep it as a jobs thing, and we have infrastructure money, the debt reduction that was seventy percent, of course, a lot of it's committed, but if we're looking at doing other things outside of jobs, we look, need to look at other streams for that, and we've got a whole list of incentives that we just had down, down here. And I'm pretty liberal when it comes to industrial revenue bonds and being able to get rid of that sales tax portions, and I really want to do that RHID there as well. I think the one thing, when we look at that RHID or some of these, we need county and school board approval for those, or, or we talked about how they can be all sorts of these different formulas we can use, and I know we talked about it in intergovernmental, but I think we need to talk about it again to make sure there isn't like a philosophical opposition, that no matter what we say, they're not gonna say yes. So I think we need to get that out of the way, and make sure at least we have open minds when it comes to put these things through, and not go through a lot of work, and then they'll maybe put in five percent and that's it, or something like that, just to make sure we can get that to happen. And after saying all that, the part we're still gonna have to fight with here is, we try to implement this, will they be those big zoning battles in neighborhoods that are gonna come here when we talk about infill, high-density, and all of that type of thing, because that's what we're gonna run into.
Yeah, I think this was, this is really great, appreciate all the speakers coming. I think when it boils down to it, the one thing we really need to remember when we're thinking about housing is, yeah, there are a, a small portion of the folks that are involved in this that are making money, but for the vast majority of these people, we are talking about shelter. It is a place for people to live, and we have a ton of tools, which is great, I think it, it, it doesn't pigeonhole us into any specific type of development or anything like that, we have a lot of tools and a lot of options, but we are talking about providing one of the basic necessities for life, for, for folks to be able to live in our community. And so really, let's, let's, let's not forget that when we're, when we're considering these things, and keep this pushing forward. I, I love that, I think pretty much everybody on this commission understands how dire this situation is, and how important it is that we make some progress soon. So I, I, I think this is something that we are all going to be in agreeance upon, I think we'll have some, you know, maybe some, have to work out some details, but overall, this is, this is something that we have to make progress on soon, so that we can ensure that we have a good community and good places for people to live. Because if we can't do that as a governing body, I think, you know, none of us deserve to be sitting up here, so let's just keep that in mind as we're moving forward.
Lots of good information tonight. I think we should pursue the multiple things that you suggested. No question, we need more housing. One thing I would urge is, is to make the regulations as flexible as we can, because it's very difficult to fit certain things into certain areas. We've talked about infill. I'm not against infill as part of the older neighborhoods, but I think you have to be very careful with it not to impact what's already there. That's the, the point of good zoning is to protect your investment. If you have a house someplace, you don't want a taco stand across the street. So, yeah, well, maybe you do, I don't know, maybe, a food truck, a food truck, he wants a taco stand, all right. But, yeah, we've got a lot going for us, and let's do it. Let's not sit on this for twenty years, for heaven's sakes. Avail ourselves of all the expertise that we've heard tonight, and get going.
I think what I heard this evening in part was that the RHID is low-hanging fruit, that it's not terribly, terribly difficult to implement, and it can be applied in a number of different situations. So I would encourage developers and city staff to look into that, but at the same time, I think it's important that we do continue to try to be innovative in using some of the other methodologies and the other tools that are available. I was really encouraged when Josh mentioned increased collaboration with the city, and I really would encourage that public-private partnership to continue. I think just seeing the turnout tonight, it's very clear that there are a lot of people who think this is a really important issue. I would count myself among you, I've learned a lot speaking to many of you in the last several months. But I think, as Karen said, you know, we, we do seem to be having some momentum, and I'd like us to do everything we can to pursue, to follow up with that.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments tonight, some very good, very good public input, that I'm sure will build into the, build into the plan, and, you know, and I'm with sort of the undercurrent I heard there, we, we do a lot of studies at the city, do a lot of talking at the city, and it's now time to take some action on the housing. So I think that's where we're going, I think the commission all agrees with that philosophy. So this is a work session, so we're not voting on anything tonight, so we won't be taking any votes, that'll come later, and we'll move on to the next part of the meeting, which is the city manager briefing. You can take it from there.
And Commissioners, thank you, I will be briefed this evening, we just did it last week, so, and we're gonna do it again next week, because we got that fifth Tuesday we rescheduled, and so I, I wasn't planning on going over the, the chart, because I did that last time, not much has changed, and if we add some stuff to it next week, we'll, we'll do that. Just some reminders, I guess, you know, we do have the commission retreat this Friday at, at the zoo, there is a MRC luncheon on February seventh. If you're planning to attend the Chamber Annual Meeting, it's February ninth, and the rest of them are all in, into, there is a local government day, and I know Commissioner Adamcheck is planning to attend that tomorrow, and... Susan? And, and Peter is as well, thank you. And so with that, I did want to let you know that I did get a copy of Hayes's resolution for the expansion of Medicaid, and ways to tailor that with the information we had, so I'll hope to have a draft next week, and then if you like that, we'll put it on for approval on the sixth. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, I, I'm, I'm looking through the open board positions, I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at that, and there's a couple of them here that are gonna be an, an issue, because nobody's applied, and, you know, that always makes it, makes it tough. But the Aggieville Business Improvement District, I, I don't have anybody there, so I'm gonna contact them and see what we can do, because didn't get a response from the one person that's on there. And then the Housing Authority Board, I think all three of them are interested in staying again, so I just plan on putting them forth, they seem to have been doing a pretty good job. The Human Rights and Services Board, that one has got a couple of openings, and people not interested in serving another term, so I, I called Jerry Harper, who, who agreed to take one of the slots, and Shelley LaValle, another one. Dana is planning on staying, you know, on their another, another term. And then the other position, I contacted Julie Gabbert, and she's agreed to, you know, serve on the board. So I think, I, I think those are okay, the, the big problem is the Joint Corrections Advisory Board, no one has applied, so it... Joint Corrections Advisory Board, there's a, there is a juvenile position and an adult term, Jamie Morris Hardeman had both of those, and she doesn't want to continue. So if you know anyone, you know, you get them to, to submit their names, and for the audit committee, you know, Eric wants to stay on there, Eric Higgins, so we'll leave him on there, and of course, John, you, you took Mayor Hattasal's place on that.
You're welcome.
And then the Partner City Advisory Committee, I'll get with Ed Klimak, I don't have any names that, you know, were submitted for that. And then there's a, probably a board most of you aren't familiar with, Riley County Solid Waste Management Committee. And they, and they meet when, when required, but, you know, I, I don't have any applicants there, the, the one that I called, Jack Platt from the school district, he, he had been appointed by the county, and I didn't know that, so he's already on there.
Do they have to be a local resident?
Uh, they have to be a Manhattan city resident, because the county appoints some, so, so, so I asked for your assistance, if you can help shake the, you know, if anybody's interested in that, and of course, on the hub, you, you can see the open positions, but I'll, I'll get these ones that I can fill sent over to the city clerk, so she can get them on the agenda next time. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, maybe we can get it on an agenda, it's a simple item, not gonna require staff work, is we had that public comment a couple months ago, where Gary Olds recommended that we allow open public comment at both legislative meetings, which would be twice a month, and I guess we'd need to put that on the agenda for a vote. I don't see a problem with that, because generally, we don't get that many folks, tonight was an exception, and it was on a specific topic anyway, which is always allowed.
Yeah, but you can speak.
Would we have to change, Katie, would have to change?
Yeah, you're, we have a adopted policy in our procedures that designates the first legislative meeting of the month for open public comment. We'd have to modify that policy.
Yeah, we'd have to change it to say, "Any legislative meeting we allow open..."
Actually...
If you're willing to consider it.
So we're going through procedures as part of the training next week, and, and we'll look at your existing policies and procedures, so we, we got time to talk about it some more if you want.
All right, that's all I have, so anything that anyone else cares to share? No? Well, based on that, we can take a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four city commission work session.
I'll second. They want, they can call the old.
All right. Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Olpelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Manna?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn is passed.
All right.